Great. Good evening. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:35. Like to turn on the meeting first to our city attorney Keith Lomier, who would like to make an announcement.
Yeah, I have an announcement coming from out of a meeting that occurred prior to this meeting. The Brown Act requires me to make a report about if any action was taken in that meeting. The board met in close, sorry, the city council met in closed session to discuss the item identified at conference with labor negotiator. With the negotiators identified as Lazaretto, LeMieux, and Pelarski. The city council received a report from the negotiators. No reportable action was taken. Madam Mayor, that concludes the report.
Thank you. Next, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by me. Please stand. Please place your right hand over your heart and face where the flag would normally be placed. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag. American and to the Republican. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. And just. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Manchaca?
Here.
Vice Mayor Liu?
Here.
Councilmember Ding?
Yeah.
Councilmember Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Pu?
Here.
Great. So tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three in our online platforms. Please email all public comments to cityclerk@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the council tonight. Comments received after items have been considered will not be read into the record. Comments will be read by Assistant City Clerk Marilyn Bonus for up to three minutes each. Agenda items will be introduced by City Clerk Sharon Clark. Next item.
Mayor, that would be approval of the agenda order.
Okay. Staff has an announcement before we have. We approve the agenda. Mark, would you like to make the announcement?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we were working on the Athens discussion item up until the last minute, and we're not able to get that as polished as we would have liked. So I'm asking council to consider removing that from tonight's agenda. It doesn't need to be continued or anything like that because it's not a public hearing, but we will be bringing that back in June for a discussion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any objections to the agenda order as amended? Okay, so I see no objections. So the agenda is approved. Thank you. Next item.
The next item is presentations. Recognition of Service outgoing Chair of Planning Commission Norman Garden. Presentation will be made by Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Arminia Chaparian.
Thank you, Sharon. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. It is with great honor that I present a special recognition this evening to our outgoing planning commission chairman, Norman Garden. Norm was appointed by the city council to the planning commission in December of 1999. In January 2005, he was elected as chairman and has since held this position for the past 15 years. For 21 years, Norm has shared his incredible talent and leadership experience in public-private partnerships with the city's planning commission. He was instrumental in presiding over many of the city's successful development projects that have helped transform San Gabriel to what it is today. He was also involved with the enormous amount of improvements, updating, and implementation of our city's codes, zoning regulations, design guidelines, and of course, the highlight being the delivery of a homegrown general plan. His expertise in his field helped with the implementation of the Valley Boulevard specific plan. He is a big advocate for smart growth and increasing density by creating walkable communities through the incorporation of mixed-use developments. One of Norm's best qualities as chairman has been his objectivity and vision. I have watched him preside over some really tough planning commission meetings, and through each of these experiences, his fairness and ability to hear both sides of an issue have been incredible. His great attitude, kindness, and fairness also extends to staff and peers on the commission. With his increasing workload and busy schedule, Norm had decided to retire from the planning commission to focus his efforts in running his own business. Thank you, Norm, for your service and dedication for all these years, not only with the planning commission, but also with the city of San Gabriel that you proudly could call home. We are definitely going to miss you. You have been, personally, you have been a great individual to work with before each commission meeting, and you have made the planning commission experience unforgettable. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome the mayor and council members to say a few words if they'd like.
Okay, well, I guess I'll start. First of all, thank you for being here, Norm. At least I get to see you. See your smiling face there. You know, we've known each other for decades. Our daughters started kindergarten together about 25 years ago, which is hard to believe now. Both you and your wife, you've been longstanding and valued commissioners in the development of San Gabriel. So it's really become, it's really been a family affair. On behalf of the city council, I wanted to personally thank you for your steadfast commitment to due process with full and fair hearings at every meeting. We thank you for taking on the chair role for 15 years. I think that's a record in city's history for any commission. Lastly, if Norm had been an elected council member, he would have been the third longest-serving public servant in the city. I did a little fact-checking here. The Vino CC held office for 25 years, followed by Mike Falabrino for 24 years. So you are third in longevity of public service. What a legacy. There's no doubt that you've had a tremendous impact in our city, Norm. Enjoy your much-deserved retirement from the planning commission. And, you know, you're always welcome to a commission meeting or even a city council meeting if you miss it. So, thank you so much. And before we ask Norm to have to say some parting words, you know, my council members, would you like to say anything? Again, I can't see all of you, but if you can just unmute yourself. Is there anyone who would like to say something?
Madam Mayor?
Okay, Vice Mayor?
This is Vice Mayor. Hi, Norman. San Gabriel is truly, truly honored to have your service. You know, we should call you Mr. San Gabriel, period. So, you know, for all your work, actually, it's truly amazing. All the buildings, you know, you watch them from design to build. It's amazing. Without you, without your service, I don't know what the San Gabriel would look like. But hopefully, I will run into you because I saw you walking your dog along Del Mar and Live Oak all the time. So maybe I'll see you, you know, but good luck to your future endeavor. And thank you for your service again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council members that would like to say something? The councilmember Pu?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to echo some of the things that have already been said by the mayor, Norm. It is great to see you because in these COVID days, we take for granted all of the events and meetings and things like that, that where we used to actually physically see each other from time to time. So just, you know, again, also for me, the, we've been blessed to have you be a part of our planning commission for so long and share it for so long. And I hope that we will definitely be able to keep in touch and we won't, that you won't be a stranger within the community. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Norm, I'd just like to thank you for your years of service. We've had some good conversations, not always about building or, you know, development. I really appreciate the professionalism and the knowledge you brought, as well as just the leadership. I mean, taking the chair for that long is not an easy job. Just, just running meetings is a little different than attending a meeting. It takes a little more focus. And hopefully, once everything gets back to normal, we can go have a beer over at Ogo Pogo. That's where I seem to run into you the most.
Common ground.
Thank you.
And is there anyone else? Councilmember Ding?
Yes, thank you, Norman. Thank you. I hear about all this, the mayor council, you service us. It's 15 years. I appreciate, but that, that's my, I just get a council, council member, I don't have any chance to talk to you, but I hope I can learn from you for the future, keep in touch. I, I wish that because you service our city almost, it's 15 years. I think you have the good vision for our city, the planning. So I wish I can, for the future, keep in touch and learn from you and have good retirement life. Thank you.
Just clarification, he served 15 years as the chair of the planning commission, but he actually was on the planning commission since 1999, so 21 years. So don't torch him. Last meeting, don't torch him.
Okay, alright.
Anyway, Norm, any, any words you'd like to say?
Yeah, I, first of all, Madam Mayor, esteemed council members, thank you very, very much. Kind of a bittersweet moment, but I thought it was, you know, when I spoke with Armin, it was, I felt it was time. Interesting thing is, I gave my notice right before the whole pandemic and lockdown, if you will, or stay-at-home orders. So now I've got more time than I have, than I need on my hands, but I think it's still deep down the right move. I, you know, I want to thank the city in particular, and I feel like I have witnessed, gosh, seems like an entire generation of, you know, civic leaders, various city managers, you know, people at the staff level. And I'm very proud to say that I, I think, you know, with time having gone by, the city has progressed a lot and, you know, and as Armin was kind of reading a little bit my background, I am very passionate about mixed use, and I know it sometimes, you know, mixed-use projects get sort of a negative connotation. I do believe it's still part of our future. And, you know, any opportunity or role I had to play in, in helping try to make San Gabriel a little bit better from a commercial mixed-use point of view. You know, I was very, very proud of that, and I like the direction the city is going in, and you guys are all doing a great job. And, you know, the, it will be good to get a, sort of a breath of fresh air, someone new in there, which I'm sure you guys will pick someone very, very capable. And, but the other four members, you know, led by Vice Chair Tom Clawitter, is a very, very, it's probably the best group of colleagues I've had over the course of the past 20-some-odd years. It's, it's a great commission and it does, you know, just last week, we, you know, had a very, still a very challenging project with the Arroyo project, which still has to come back to the commission and, but I think those are the kind of projects that, that are very stimulating and make it kind of fun. And hopefully, it's a win-win for everybody that's involved. So anyways, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Norm. Those are very kind words to everyone, and hopefully, we'll see you in person in the future.
You know what? As John Harrington says, if you want to catch me somewhere as soon as this pandemic is over, I'll be sitting over at Ogo Pogo.
Great, great. Shop local.
That's exactly.
Thank you, Norm. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
COVID-19 update on city operations. Presentations will be made by Fire Chief Wallace, Police Chief Harris, and City Manager Lazaretto.
And again, a reminder, this will be an ongoing presentation on the agenda until COVID-19 epidemic ends. We want to keep the public informed on a timely basis on efforts being taken by our first responders and city staff. So we will begin with Fire Chief Wallace.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Liu, and members of council. That's Steve Wallace, Fire Chief for the city of San Gabriel, here with an update tonight on both fire department operations and the status of COVID in the city of San Gabriel. I'm happy to report that not a whole lot has changed since our last update, that we see a relatively static situation developing. We are 100% staffed in the fire department and have 100% of our response vehicles online and responding on a daily basis. We're also maintaining our completely healthy status. We've seen only one COVID call since our last discussion. I believe it was on Friday night. We've only had one, one case that we suspect we've responded on. And in the city, we are now up to 86 cases in a total of five deaths. Interestingly, the situation at the Royal Vista convalescent home seems to have stabilized as well. They are now at nine staff and 25 patients infected, and they account for four of the five deaths in the city. We are still in contact with them. We are still trying to suggest best practices and help them out with any PPE needs. We have not heard from any of the other convalescent homes in the city that they are experiencing any infections at all. We are watching this very closely now as the county is starting to reopen and then the state is starting to reopen. We do remain fully prepared to respond if we should see a surge or any increase in cases. And we are monitoring that very, very closely, and we'll bring that to city officials to make any modifications to our operations and our city opening plans. That concludes my report for this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to wait till the rest of the presenters do their report, and then I'll call the council members. But thank you, Chief. Police Chief Harris?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Dean Harris, the Police Chief for the city of San Gabriel. And I will give you a quick overview in two sections of police department activities during this pandemic. The first will be the organizational brief. I'm also proud to say that we are at full staffing and completely healthy, and the police department is still providing full enforcement service to members of this community. We are not experiencing any major spikes in criminal activity, with the exception of a slight spike in the domestic violence cases. We've had no major injuries as a result of those cases, and we're moving forward with prosecutions or mitigations appropriately. But aside from that, we've experienced no major spikes in any criminal activity. We are currently operating from a staffing level, what we consider to be at level one. For us, level one means that all of our special assignment personnel are still working their special assignments. We are not augmenting patrol. We're using patrol staffing to cover all the line operation services and detectives. We are, what that means to the public is that we are not having anyone taking days off, vacation holiday and those things, other than their, their regular days off, so that they can be ready for recalls should we experience any surges or spikes in activity. At some point, we will move back to normal operations, and I'll discuss that later in the briefing. As you may be aware, the state and the county have implemented phased reopening. We've incorporated the phased reopening piece in our operations plan. And there are four stages to their reopening. Briefly, they are considered stage one, safer at home. Stage two, lower-risk businesses opening. Stage three, higher-risk businesses opening. And stage four is back to normal operations by the state. We're currently in stage two, which means there are some loosening of the requirements and loosening of some of the restrictions within our community. Those restrictions and the loosening are kind of fluid. So we are still maintaining our mantra of approaching this with a voluntary compliance discipline. Although we can actively enforce these issues if need be, if the need arises, we have chosen to do the voluntary compliance because this community has done a very good job of monitoring themselves and cooperating with the directions and suggestions and orders from the state, the county, CDC, and our local authorities. So this community is to be commended for that. But we do want to remind people that in egregious cases, we, in cases, we can always ramp up the enforcement, but we would prefer to remain on voluntary compliance. One of the things that will change here as we've moved into stage two is we will re-implement shortly the timed parking enforcement. But as we do that, we will do that with a grace period so that we let people know that it's coming, and then give a 15-day grace period before we start actively enforcing it. It'll be warnings only. And that's simply just to make sure that people get the opportunity to understand we're going back, at least to some reasonable semblance of normal activity. The O and P, the overnight parking adjustment, will not be made until the state moves to a stage three, which would be more of the higher-risk stuff. We expect that may happen sometime toward July, August, but it's always subject to change. And when that occurs, we're going to give a 45-day grace period so that we can give people the opportunity to relocate cars and things that may be parked in front of their house based on all the circumstances with COVID. But I will make sure that the community gets ample prior notice before we make any of those moves. As far as patrol, traffic, community engagement, and administrative services, there were minor modifications in the way that we were doing the operations, simply designed to keep everyone apart. Our mantra has been keeping everybody together by keeping them apart. And so there are some elements that we will start to slowly bring back. But we will announce those things to the public as we do that. One of the most relevant for us would be National Night Out. We have made the determination that National Night Out will not move forward this year, but we will come back with, with, with a vengeance next year and make sure we're doing it as, as good as we've ever done it. But we don't want to send the wrong message because that whole endeavor is about bringing people together. And in the context of organization, it may be a little bit too soon to start organizing that endeavor. So we looked at some options and decided that cancellation is the best option, but we are still going committed to all of our community outreach, being accessible to the members of the community during this pandemic and beyond. I'm going to shift now to the C E O C portion of my presentation. It's very brief. We staff the C E O C, which is the county's emergency operations center on Eastern. And we have a member of the Los Angeles County Chiefs attending every one of those briefings in both the fire department through their D-Max and us through the LA County Chiefs. We get information from the day-to-day operations there with the county. Of late, there's been no major changes. We simply get the numbers of cases and some of the other information that's been made public by the news. But I will keep the community up to date on any specific information that's not proprietary or confidential. They're at later dates to make sure people get updated. And the last thing I want to mention is Operation Room Key, which many people have heard about. And Operation Room Key, the basics are that the county has, it's actually come from the state, but the county is active in trying to relocate and find home, shelter for the homeless population within our county. And they are incorporating the use of hotels, local hotels, to get that done, entering into direct agreements with hotels to try and find. I want to remind the members of the public that we, we see homelessness as not a crime, but as a plight that, that has real human beings and real human capital involved. And we're responsive to the needs of those segments of our community. In our situation, none of the hotels in San Gabriel have either been, they may have been approached, but not committed to housing these folks as of yet, and we don't know if that will happen. But some of the surrounding cities have, and so we're monitoring any residual situations that may occur as a result of, of those housing units. Aside from that, we've experienced no adverse or ill effects from Project Room Key as of yet, but we will monitor it just to make sure that we're staying on top of it. And that ends my report for today.
Thank you, Chief. And lastly, our city manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, just a brief update from me tonight. Like, public safety, the city staff, the, the rest of the city staff, we have not had any cases of COVID-19 in any of staff members. So we luckily remain able to perform all of our duties, albeit virtually. We are open for business, not literally. We, you can make appointments if you absolutely have to come into city hall, but we are finding alternate ways to provide services to the community. So call us, email us, send us a snail mail letter, whatever it takes, and we will still continue to accept plans. We will take requests for service in the field for things like trimming trees or filling potholes. And we are still doing almost every service that the city provides. Like our public safety staff members, we have public work staff members out in the field still taking care of sewer issues and trimming trees. Our community services folks are providing hundreds of meals a day to our seniors and also providing alternative programming for our youth. Our city clerk is as busy as ever. Our, our community development department is as busy as ever. And so we welcome any requests for service that you have. I do want to highlight a county program that was put into full swing this week, the Great Plates Delivered Program. So for those senior citizens who are not able to get meals through other programs and aren't being served by our current meal delivery service, the county has a program where you can get meals delivered every day from local restaurants of your choice, as long as the restaurant is part of the program. So I encourage any senior citizens in our community that aren't receiving meals or having trouble getting food delivered to dial 211, and the county will connect you with the Great Plates Delivered Program. And for any of our restaurants that want to participate and be a, a food provider, you can dial 211 or go on the county's website and sign up, and you can be a provider for three meals a day for senior citizens in our area. And finally, I just wanted to give a shout out and a huge thanks to all of our city staff. Our public service folks put themselves in danger every day in, in helping our community. But as I said, every other staff member is also continuing to do their job. And we have had a phenomenal outpouring of folks who are just willing to do whatever it takes to get the job done. We have folks working from home and being as productive as ever. We have folks sitting here in city hall and every other department. So I just want to thank our, our staff for the work that they do. I want to thank the council for the leadership that you provided during these times. And then, most importantly, the community for being as, as cooperative and part of this response that's taking all of us. And, and we are doing a great thing. It's been hard for everybody, but I have to tell us that by sticking through it all, we are making a difference, and it'll help us get out of this sooner. I've read a study that says that the shutting down isn't what ruins the economy. It's the pandemic. And if we all work together, the actual economic impact will be felt less by our community than it would if we sort of stop and start the economy. So that's my soapbox and my update for the day, and I'm willing to answer any questions that the council has, as well as PD and fire are able to answer any questions as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, let's start with any council questions. Vice Mayor Lau, would you like to kick it off?
Oh, okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I just have a quick question for Fire Chief Wallace. It's regarding that convalescent home that had outbreak and looks like it's pretty serious. Five people died, I guess, from this. Have they found out what caused that, you know, outbreak? And also, does the county or health department, are they doing anything to prevent this type of thing happening all throughout LA County? Because as I understand, more than 50% of the people die from this coronavirus, you know, from convalescent homes. So maybe that's somewhere we all should be looking into and see how we can prevent this type of incident. So you have any information about that?
Sure do. It's some great questions and very, very current, actually, with what's going on, both the Department of Public Health and the EMS agency. We, on the EMS agency call yesterday morning, was actually talked about quite a bit because these facilities are contributing to 50% or more of the deaths that we're seeing in the county. It's specifically to Royal Vista. It is under investigation by the Department of Public Health. The Department of Public Health tells us that there is a community nurse now assigned specifically to that facility and is looking into the cause of the spread. We suggested that after speaking with the director of nursing, it could be with this, the manner in which their PPE is being used, that perhaps it is not being changed as healthcare workers move room to room and patient to patient. as healthcare workers move room to room and patient to patient, potentially spreading disease. That's based on what our brief investigation and our discussions seems to be the most probable cause. But I am assured by D P H that they are on it. And they're looking at it. On a broader scale, they have assembled what they're calling strike teams of public health nurses that are going to each facility in the county and testing upwards of fifty thousand patients. I know we had this discussion a little bit last Friday night after we had a call with some of their administrators and Department of Public Health doctors. And they were laying that plan out. They've said it's been going on since the beginning of the pandemic. I think it was a bit of a bigger challenge than what they thought of. But what they tell us is it is being handled, it is being looked into, and it is actively being worked on. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, Chief. But also, you mentioned they're going to test fifty thousand patients. But what about the people that working in the convalescent homes, all these, you know, healthcare providers or maybe a cook or whatever nurse A, do they have to go through the test and see if they have the virus?
I believe they are testing. In that number that I quoted, that that does include both staff and employees. I know it's patients, but it's a, it's an all in collective number.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pooh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to follow up to that, Chief Wallace. Have you heard back from D P H as to whether they have in fact tested the other four skilled nursing facilities in the city of San Gabriel, other than Royal Vista?
I don't have an answer that says whether they have or haven't. No, not since Friday, no.
And for Mark, I understand that we have or are in the process of installing sneeze guards at all of our public facilities and public counters where there's interaction with the public. You know, this is in preparation for actually reopening public facilities to the public. I can't recall now, but what is, what, what, what is the anticipated timeframe for for that? And I guess, I assume too, we will have other physical distancing protocols in place at the same time for members of the public who do enter these facilities. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you for the question. So we are installing the sneeze guards now. They are in City Hall. They've been all week putting those up and they should be done by, if not the end of this week, by early next week. And they are not like a flimsy kind that you might see temporarily put up. They're doing a job that will look like it's part of City Hall and will be able to be there for several months, unfortunately, if needed. As far as the reopening and the protocols, yes, we're looking at approximately three weeks before we would start having folks come into City Hall if needed. But I say if needed, because we're still going to encourage folks to make use of online services and telephone services. Still trying to make use of paying bills and other things through the phone and other methods. And we have adapted quite rapidly to some of that technology. And so we're trying to make it easier for folks. But for those folks that absolutely have to come in, we'll start out with an appointment only basis so that we have the physical distancing in our lobbies, so that we don't have folks that are sitting near each other. We will have areas taped off, like you see in the grocery store and other stores, so that people will know what six feet is from one person to the other. And we won't have chairs next to each other in any of our lobbies. So those kinds of of physical changes that we can make. But again, our, our, our hope is that we're able to keep people at home and still receive services so that they're not having to come in.
Thanks very much. That's a great answer.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I just wanted to thank everybody for the presentations. I'm glad to hear we're status quo. We have no, no issues. So thank you.
Councilmember Dean.
Yes, thank you. I hate to dread to hear about our San Gabriel City. Most it's a safety, but except like Royal Vista. Yeah, hopefully, we, the facility can get a control or a P P E, but just shared the, the, from the opinion from my U C L E doctor, I say the meter and okay, today. Keep the social distance. Okay, I say I really appreciate that your doctor, the frontline to help our the community. And we also have a donated P P E to their frontline, the work. That's interesting. He, he, he mentioned it's really help them to like the safety. So first of all, everybody still keeps socially distant. If you're safety, they are safety. Okay, that's a shared comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with, with our chief, with Chief Wallace. I noticed that the recording has changed. The recording is a public link. Anyone can go to it. But last week, it started separating the number of confirmed cases between the city and the nursing facilities. And the nursing facilities are listed alphabetically. And then yesterday, I know it now lists the deaths. So we have, for example, with the nursing facility has a number of confirmed cases for patients, for staff, and now the number of deaths. For city, it has confirmed cases plus the deaths. And so are there going to be any other changes to the reporting? Is there more information that we're going to be having access to? Or are you aware of any more information?
Thank you for that. That's something I am actually pretty curious about. I too see the changes. And that was actually very happy to see the information regarding the convalescent homes come up last week. I believe that that's a work in progress. I will pose that question the next call I'm on with D P H to see what they have in the pipeline and what might be coming down as far as that. If you have a request, if there's something you'd be interested to see, if you'd shoot me an email, I'll certainly run that up to them as well. But I think it's it's an evolving dashboard. As more data becomes available and as time goes on, I think we will see more and more. But I, like I said, I will run that up to them and see what we can find out.
Thank you. Yeah, I just think it's really helpful for the public to, to be made aware of what the status is in every city, and especially the nursing facilities. One more question on the nursing facility. Do they have a responsibility to tell the patient's family whether they're confirmed with COVID or not? To let them know that there is an outbreak? Isn't that a requirement or not? I had a resident ask me that question because they found out through us that there was an outbreak and they have a family member that was, that lives there. And no one had called them from the nursing facility. So I, I want to at least ask you.
Another good question that I will follow up on, but to the best of my knowledge, anything that has to do with the healthcare and the resident in the facility is going to come under HIPAA laws. If someone has a designated power of attorney or designated decision maker that gets information about their healthcare, they're going to find out. Otherwise, it's unlikely that a facility, just out of the goodness of their heart, is probably going to just call people and tell them what's going on in the facility. An example of that is we had a very difficult time finding out what was actually happening when our personnel were responding in and out of the facilities. It took County Department of Health reporting before we found out the scope of what was going on in Royal Vista. So they are being very tight lipped about it. I think on a legal standpoint, unless someone else is authorized to get specific information about a patient and their housing, that that probably won't happen. But again, I've got it on my list. I want to run that up the chain and see if I can come back with a more in-depth answer for you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. And that's all I have for now. Next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. Comments will be read for up to three minutes. Assistant City Clerk Bonus, please read any public comments that have been received.
Good evening, Council. We have received several comments related to the Chamber of Commerce funding that will be read during the public comment section of item six B. We have also received a comment from Clive Jim and Alhambra Vega neighbors, and it reads as follow. Dear Honorable Mayor Denise Machaca and Councilmembers, this public comment is in regard to the irregularities concerning San Gabriel Planning Commission meeting on May eleven. And the concerned item is public hearing item A two, three, five, South Arroyo Drive project. This is a project that is filled with protests and opposition since its earliest iteration in two thousand and three. The project is too monstrous, too disregarding, too damaging impacts, especially to the Alhambra neighborhood immediately adjacent. The current generation of proposed design is a forty-one unit project that is looking to have its finalized sequel review adopted by city resolution. But also to have those absolutely unacceptable setback reduction variances be granted by the San Gabriel Planning Commission, together with the approval of a tentative track map. First of all, sequel review should have never been finalized by the planning department due to many unresolved objections by Alhambra neighbors. Secondly, variances approval should have never been recommended by the San Gabriel Planning, again, due to unacceptable impacts to the adjacent single family Alhambra neighborhood. What is improper and what we are asking the honorable mayor to meet remotely with us to look into the last minute change of public hearing protocol that had effectively muzzled improperly tuned down our voices of objection that were backwards sound rationale. Up until the last minute change to have our voices heard, we were notified and informed by the San Gabriel Planning Department that public comments will be read out into the record during the May eleven public hearing if they were sent after the fifth of May and up until the discussion of item A on May eleven. In anticipation, many, many public comments objecting to the two thirty-five South Arroyo Drive project were sent by concerned neighbors and citizens in accordance to the protocol notified by the public by San Gabriel officials. Instead, at five oh eight P M on May eleven, the date of the hearing, less than an hour and a half before the hearing were to begin, a few of us received a vague and suspiciously unassuming email notice forwarded to us and hidden in second layer in the notice that all public comments, close to a hundred of them that were sent in up until three thirty P M that same day, were instead filled into or filed into the hearing package and not to be read out into the record. And the planning commissioners were recommended to read them before the hearing. If not because of some of the concerned neighbors and citizens who were standing by to listen to the live broadcast, we would not have been prepared to send in new public comments that had managed to persuade the planning commissioner. The three minute timer has concluded. And that is all for this public comment section.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Assistant City Clerk Bonus, we just received two more comments. Could you let me know if you're able to access those for right now?
Drop them.
Thank you.
One second. Okay. This public comment is from R E G Arambola. And it reads as follows. Members of the council, my communication today is in regards to Arroyo Village project. Based on my research, I understand the city of San Gabriel to Fort Preservation Commission designated the parcels on which the project would be built as pertinent to the history of San Gabriel. Specifically, the area adjacent to where the Alhambra Wash is now located used to be the actual route for the natural river. The river would have been key to the native peoples for and before and after the San Gabriel mission was built. As such, I formally request the San Gabriel to Fort Preservation Commission to review the project plans and confirm that this project may legally go forward. This is preliminary concern before we review the particulars of the project design and compliance with zoning requirements. Thank you for your assistance with this important matter. And the last public comment we received is from Paul Padilla, and it reads as follows. Dear City Clerk and City Councilmembers, I write to call you to arrange for public comment to be made available via telephone or video. If audio is good enough for the city council members and city staff, it should be good enough for your bosses. That is, we, the people. You need to remember that we, your bosses, are every bit of a part of the city council meetings as you are. Therefore, every attempt should be made to include us in the meeting in the same manner as yourselves. Should a prankster call in, they can always be muted. Many cities have already incorporated audio and video for the public for virtual meetings post COVID nineteen. Please do so for the next meeting. It is important for members of the public to react in real time or near real time when things are said during the meeting by council members, staff, interested parties, or other members of the public to which they wish to speak. Having to quickly draft an email isn't the same as being able to walk up to the podium and speak exoneratively for three minutes. Imagine if all of your council comments had to be drafted ahead of time or very hurried, banged out on your computer. Rather than you being able to speak based on what you had just heard during the meeting, what, what, what has been said obviously changes what people say. For example, agenda item six A regarding the Athens contract, it says that the presentation is attached, but it is not attached. The link to the Brown Act violation may therefore have occurred. I may assume, I assume an Athens rep will at least speak verbally. However, the public should be able to comment verbally in real time or near real time in unusual, in unusual manner as well. Sincerely, Paul Cole Padilla. And that is the end of public comment.
Next item.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or audience requests separate discussion.
Assistant City Clerk, have we received any requests from the public to pull any items from the consent agenda?
We have not.
Okay, I will now ask each council member if they'd like to pull an item for a separate discussion or clarification. Councilmember Dean.
No.
Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Councilmember Pooh.
I just have a clarifying question on item four G.
And let me just go to Council Vice Mayor Lau. Did you have any items you'd like to pull?
No, Madam Mayor, nothing.
Let me, so Councilmember Pooh, can we just address your questions before we ask for a motion?
Sure. This item is to make a budget amendment to increase Prop C funding for the maintenance of the metro parking ride lots. And I understand the, the gist of the item. However, I'm curious, Greg, if you are able to clarify here. Will this then be an adjustment that is annual and will carry over year after year?
Yes, this is an annual adjustment. We realized in maintaining these metro lots that it was covering our labor, but I was signing for water bills and we do some landscape and material costs that weren't being covered. So we're upping the amount metro so they would do that for us. And it will be ongoing after, if you approve it tonight, it'll continue.
Okay, and, you know, we use Prop C funds for other projects. Have you yet had a chance to look at how this reallocation of funding will affect some of the other projects that were, that may have previously been funded with the Prop C funds?
Well, I guess it'll have an equal and opposite reaction by the laws of physics. Yes, that that's true. This, this money will be a reduction elsewhere, but we are currently covering the water bills and landscape costs for the metro lot with general fund dollars, which we're trying to preserve as best we can and and improve our situation there.
Well, yeah, we certainly are. Well, yeah, we certainly appreciate that on the city council and protecting those general fund dollars. So, but in other words, for in our CIP, then we'll just, we'll have to basically replace any Prop C funds that were going towards infrastructure projects, streets, or other, other CIP type of projects. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the clarification.
Great. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
Motion to approve.
All right. So I have a first, Councilmember Poo, and a second from Vice Mayor Lau. Assistant Clerk, please take the vote. Assistant Clerk?
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Councilmember Dean? Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Poo?
Yes.
Council Vice Mayor Liu?
Aye.
Mayor Ms. Chaka?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of five to zero.
Next item?
Next item is public hearing. We have none tonight. Then the next section, new business. Item A, Athens Services Contract Options, has been pulled to tonight's agenda and will be considered at the June 2 regular meeting. Item B is the City of San Gabriel Economic Development 3.0 Strategy, a ten-point plan for recovery, resiliency, and reinvestment. Presentation will be made by Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Shaparian and Management Assistant Claudia Gellin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. As we all know, the last two months have completely shifted the business paradigm. And for the first time in decades, we are seeing a decline so drastic that it is imperative for us to launch a program that will provide our business community with the tools, education, and financial boost that they need to stay in business. Our presentation this evening will focus on what we're calling our Economic Development Strategy 3.0. We are operating in a new world and we need a new strategy that slightly shifts how we have typically done economic development and focuses on today's reality. Tonight, I am joined by Claudia Gellin from Economic Development, and we will present to you what we're calling our Ten Point Plan for Recovery, Resiliency, and Reinvestment. The ideas proposed in our plan pull from experiences we are currently having with our business community, what we are seeing in our industry, and the practicality of what our business community needs. It is important to note that this is not a plan set in stone. It will be evolving and growing as various phases of stay-at-home order are shifted. I do want to take a moment to also thank staff and community development, particularly Jackie Wong and Erica Ortiz, who've been a part of this process and have made hundreds of phone calls to our local businesses and continue to provide daily support. At this time, I will turn it over to Claudia as she introduces several of the points. Thank you.
Thank you, Armin. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. We are really excited to share with you tonight this plan that we have been working on for the last several weeks. In the next two slides, I'm going to list all the ten points for you, and then we will dive into what each one entails. Here on slide number two, we have point number one, Digital Media Toolkit. Point number two, Guide to New Ways for Commerce. Three, Shop Local Campaign. Four, Saving on City Fees. Five, Expedited City Services. Slide three. Six, Implementing Best Practices. Seven, Connecting to Financial Resources. Eight, City Hall Business Concierge Service. Nine, Promoting Retail or Development Opportunity Sites. And ten, Sharing Success Stories. All four. The point number one, Digital Media Toolkit. The purpose of the Digital Media Toolkit is to provide marketing materials that will help businesses promote the reopening of their stores. It will include customizable templates for things like grand reopening signs, open signs for takeout, curbside pickup and delivery, and social distancing signs. These can be something they can easily customize and print, and we'd also be more than happy to help by printing some of these as well if needed. Slide five. Point number two, Guide to New Ways for Commerce. We recognize that this pandemic is going to require businesses to explore different channels for sales and marketing. This guide will identify new ways for commerce that businesses may want to consider. It will offer strategies for reshaping their business, such as creating a business website, incorporating online ordering, establishing a presence on social media, utilizing delivery services, offering contactless payment like Apple Pay or Google Pay, and much more. And as a part of this effort, we will be offering social media 101, 101 online trainings with the assistance from our city's Public Information Officer. Slide six. Point number three, Shop Local Campaign. Shopping local is more important than ever before. This is a message that needs to be relayed both by the city and the business community. We will encourage the community to shop local by updating the current restaurant guide as information evolves, creating and promoting a San Gabriel Business Directory, expanding on the use of our San Gabriel City app and leveraging other apps to incorporate our restaurants and businesses, creating shop local street banners, and encouraging businesses to incentivize customers to frequent their businesses and explain how shopping local keeps their businesses alive. We are also looking to create a shop local digital media toolkit for businesses to utilize as well. Slide seven. Point number four, Saving on City Fees. In order to help businesses advertise the reopening of their stores and any promotions they are offering, the Economic Development Division proposes to waive city fees on window signage and storefront banners and to extend the approval periods to the next year. Currently, this type of signage and banners can be posted for two months during a calendar year. Aside from waiving signage fees, we want to allow additional signs to be utilized to help promote their businesses, as long as the signage is tastefully done. The storefront banners and window signage will still be subject to approval by the planning division, but we will not be charging a fee for planning review. In addition to this, we are proposing to waive planning fees on tenant applications in an attempt to meet health and safety guidelines like social distancing for customers and employees. So if a business needs to make changes to their layout, we wouldn't charge them to review their plans. Slide eight. Point number five, Expedited City Services. We'd like to convene a Community Development Task Force that is designated to expedite a plan checking for commercial tenant improvements. For minor, minor commercial tenant improvements, plan checking can be conducted over the counter or virtually and approved in the same day. Staff will also be providing a drive-up, pick-up, and drop-off service for those wishing to conduct business with the city. A parking space will be allocated in the parking lot with a phone number for people to call when they reach City Hall. This service would be by appointment only to help provide the safety and social distancing requirements, and upon arrival, staff would come out to the parking lot and take in the plans or return plans. Slide nine. Point number six, Implementing Best Practices. The impacts of COVID-19 may require businesses to reevaluate what they can do differently as a business and the necessary practices they may need to implement to provide a safe and healthy workplace for employees and customers. This portion of the plan would be dedicated to disseminating information on protocols pertaining to safety, sanitation, and social distancing. This is something that we have already been doing through our Economic Development newsletters by sharing mandates from the LA County Public Health Department, and it is something that we will continue to do. In addition, we'd like to include posters from the CDC and LA County in our digital toolkit that will help demonstrate this. Also, we are proposing to continue soliciting donations, donations for PPEs from the community and help provide a starter kit for businesses in need upon the reopening of their shops. City council has done a great job at this in the last several weeks, and we'd love to keep working with you to keep soliciting donations and in turn sharing some of that with the business community. Slide 10. Point number seven, Connecting to Financial Resources. As financial resources continue to become available for businesses who have been affected by COVID-19, we have dedicated a portion on our Economic Development website that helps connect businesses and employees to state and federal financial resources and information on the latest mandates coming from the county. In addition, as you see in the image to the right, the business community has received weekly letters from us regarding state and federal resources, grants, and safer-at-home mandates. I'd just like to note that these newsletters have been very well received, and I really can't even begin to express the amount of gratitude I have received from the business community for keeping them plugged in on the latest resources and information. And there have been weeks where we have sent multiple newsletters in a week to make sure they are receiving this information as it becomes available, and we will continue to do so as needed. And in addition to this, we look forward to providing another channel of information regarding resources or marketing strategies through video seminars. This was something that we had started right before the pandemic. We had hosted an Access to Capital seminar with the SBA and the LAADC. So we look forward to continue doing these types of things in alternative ways. And now I'm going to hand it back to Arminay, who will be sharing some more information on providing financial resources.
Thank you, Claudia. Slide 11, please. I will now discuss some potential new programs that staff is proposing. Since we anticipate receiving $186,148 from the CDBG program that is available to the city as part of the CARES Act, this particular pot of funds is intended to help prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. All programs that utilize this funding have to meet a CDBG national objective and serve a low and moderate income population, along with meeting statutory requirements and eligibility. Slide 12, please. I did want to share with you a map that shows shaded areas, which are actually considered our CDBG low and moderate income areas. However, for the purposes of the CDBG supplemental funding, for example, if we provided assistance to a business outside of this boundary that catered to a low and moderate resident, then that will also qualify since 51% of our city is considered low mod. As long as the business is able to demonstrate that their, that the customers they cater to are the low mod population. Slide 13, please. With approximately 2,000 small businesses in the city, one of the programs we are proposing is to launch a small business assistance program. This will be a one-time grant provided to businesses that demonstrate they are impacted by COVID-19 and need immediate, immediate assistance to get back to business. Grants may range from $1,000 to $10,000, and applicants will need to qualify. Qualifiable uses of funds may include activities such as helping businesses create jobs, retain jobs, and offer quality services to the residents of San Gabriel. Grants may be used for overhead expenses, rent, utilities, business services such as website development to increase capacity, and necessary equipment to continue business operations, among others. Businesses are not expected to pay back the grants. This program will meet the CDBG national objectives, depending on the business's eligibility, to show that what they're going to do with the funding benefits persons of low to moderate income, or there's job creation and retention involved. Slide 14. Before COVID-19, our senior meals program served 35 to 40 seniors per day when it was held at the Adult Recreation Center. As meal numbers have increased each week, the city has had to purchase meals periodically to supplement the numbers that YWCA could provide. Staff is proposing to allocate $25,000 of the CDBG supplemental funding that will allow the city to continue to provide additional meals and pay for staff labor. Slide 15, please. There were two other programs that staff had considered for CDBG, including purchasing gift cards to be used at different retailers in the city and the concept of community dollars, where this would be actual direct financial assistance to residents to utilize in the city. There were some challenges identified with these concerns, including participating residents having to be income qualified by providing financial documents. Also, the mechanism for tracking how the gift cards were being used. The administrative processing for such programs is extremely involved, and given the current staffing capacity and community development, this will be a significant undertaking. Specific to the concept of community dollars, we had actually reached out to our representative, and LACTA had denied this concept. Slide 16, please. Another program that can be, that can be funded through CDBG would be a rental assistance program. This program would provide rent relief for housing to income-qualified households. The city would establish the program guidelines and determine the relief amount and the occurrence. For example, the program could offer a one-time assistance of $1,000, or it could be $1,000 per month for up to three months. Households will need to demonstrate an economic impact due to COVID-19 and verify sources of income for all household members, including but not limited to salary, rental property income, child support, social security, employment insurance, and other sources of income. Cities having the option to contract with, have the option to contract with a nonprofit organization to provide companies to operate this program. The city does not need to go through, does not need to go through a procurement process if a nonprofit is used. Procurement is only necessary if a private company is used. Again, this type of program would require extensive documentation and reporting. Some of our neighboring cities have recently implemented similar programs. The demand has been so significant that the cities have then had to draw a lottery program to award rental relief. Slide 17, please. Lastly, another option would be for the city to utilize the entirety of the CDBG supplemental funding for a COVID-19 testing site. Should the city use a private company to operate this program, we will need to go through procurement. The city does not need to go through procurement if we use a nonprofit or our local hospital. I believe we are currently exploring other options for opening up a testing site in San Gabriel. Slide 18. Having considered the various options available for the use of CDBG supplemental funding, staff would like to recommend that the $186,000 be used towards a small business assistance program and senior meals. We feel that the small business assistance program will go a long way in reinvesting in our economic development, getting people back to work. Some of the other programs involve extensive eligibility requirements and administration. We have also budgeted $27,000 towards program management as we will need to hire a consultant to assist with managing the application process and eligibility review. This program does allow for 15% to 18% of the funds to be used for program administration. Investing in our small businesses at this time is critical as we try to get them back in business and operating. It is also important to note that there are other county programs that are being offered to our residents that many are applying for. I'm actually going to turn it over to Claudia with slide 19.
Thank you, Arminay. Point number eight, City Hall Business Concierge Services. In order for us to continue to assist new businesses opening in the city while practicing safe social distancing measures, the city will be transitioning from in-person applicant review session meetings to video conferencing for business owners and developers that would create the opportunity to meet with all relevant city departments remotely without charging the ARS fee of $655. In addition, we will continue to offer concierge services to the business community by phone, email, or video conferencing that will serve to provide personalized services that meet the needs of the business. Slide 20, please. Point number nine, Promoting Retail or Development Opportunity Sites. In order to attract new businesses to vacant retail sites and promote underutilized or vacant land for development, the Economic Development Division is proposing to incorporate a real estate database on the Economic Development website that would create a one-stop shop for prospective business owners and developers. In the interim, we've partnered with the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership to provide a list of vacant commercial sites in our city, and we will be publishing this on a monthly basis. Slide 21, please. And lastly, point number 10, Sharing Success Stories. We want to continue highlighting the stories of businesses, of business kindness through the city's Community Kindness Campaign. These stories have demonstrated the ability to bring the community together to celebrate kind acts from our local business community. And in addition, And in addition, we'd like to virtually engage the San Gabriel community with our local shops by going behind the scenes in some of our restaurants and businesses and showing them the great things that are made in San Gabriel. Slide twenty-two. And now I would like to have the opportunity to discuss the fiscal impacts. So many of the elements identified in the ten-point plan will involve staff time and resources that are currently programmed for economic development. In addition, community development will also be getting assistance from community services and Mission Playhouse staff to help with graphic design and implementation. Staff will be utilizing a portion of the CDBG supplemental funding to administer the small business grant program or other programs by bringing on a consultant for assistance with program management. By waiving fees for storefront banners, window signage, ARS meetings, and tenant improvements that involve health and safety modifications as a response to COVID-19, the city will see a fiscal impact of approximately nine thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars. This amount is based on the average of the fees that were collected in the last two fiscal years. There will also be printing costs associated with the ten-point plan. These costs will be absorbed as a part of the economic development annual budget. Slide twenty-three please. So you've heard a lot of information tonight on the several different elements of our ten-point plan. Now we want to take a few moments to discuss how we will promote the ten-point plan to our community. We have developed an extensive marketing campaign to promote the various elements including creating a one-page flyer advertising the program and directing insured businesses to contact the city, providing all materials in multiple languages including English, Chinese, Spanish, and Vietnamese, ongoing social media promotions, and weekly ED emails, virtual office meetings for the businesses to contact economic development, hosting a media press event to announce the availability of the programs, conducting this week in ED YouTube videos for businesses to follow, canvassing the city with staff and city council to pass out flyers to every business regarding the ten-point plan, and distributing this to nonprofit community organizations and the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership. Slide twenty-four please. This brings me to the end of our presentation. Community development recommends for city council to approve the ten-point plan for recovery, resiliency, and reinvestment and provide direction to staff to begin implementation as soon as all the program details are complete. And we'll now open it up for Q and A.
Okay, thank you Claudia and Arminay. That was a very thorough presentation. I feel like we're entering a new era. And so it's exciting. There's a lot of good things happening here. I'll first turn to my colleagues for clarifying questions and then we'll have public comment and then we'll end with council deliberations and discussion. So let's start with clarifying questions from city council to staff. We'll start with council member Harrington.
Thank you mayor. I just wanted to thank Claudia and Arminay for the excellent presentation first. But I did, when I went through the material, I had a couple of questions. And I don't know whether I was just misreading it or I read too much into it. It seems like you considered a lot of things for this plan and some of the things just wouldn't pan out. So the only things we're really looking at are the the recommended actions that would actually have a fiscal impact. Those are the the eight items you listed. Is that correct or not?
There's actually ten items and most of these items are things that we've actually somewhat started doing. Our plan was to bring all of the elements together in one place and start promoting all of them together. By approving what we're proposing tonight, council's giving us basically the green light to move forward with implementing all of the elements. In addition to us, our recommendation as far as using CDBG dollars as part of what we propose is that we use it for the small business grant program and for the senior meals. So we're hoping that if council approves the ten-point plan, part of that approval includes approving how we use our CDBG supplemental dollars. So we can start implementing the program.
I think that's getting to my question because when it says fiscal impact, you only listed eight items. Those are the eight items I was referring to. For FY twenty eighteen nineteen, there were four items and for FY twenty nineteen present, there were five or eight, four more items. And I think that was just because it was listed under fiscal impact. My question then was for the CBDG items. Are those, those are limited funds? I mean, I know, I know they're block grant, but are those for a particular purpose or are we taking those out of the CDBG funds in general?
They're actually, they're considered CDBG supplemental dollars. They are a new pot of money that CDBG is making it available to cities specifically for COVID-19 related activities.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify. They were not previously obligated dollars.
No, this is a new pot of CDBG dollars. We were contacted by our representative and told that we have one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And once we decide how we're going to use this funding, we will then do some paperwork that they've asked us to do and start the implementation.
Okay, and then I noticed in that there was also there was, it looks like there's some, there's some money there for a consultant. Is that correct?
We have budgeted twenty-seven thousand dollars to be used towards hiring some help to do a lot of the work that's going to be required as part of this program. Regardless of how we use it, there's going to be an extensive amount of administrative work involved with the eligibility for the applicants. And given our capacity, we certainly could use the help. And the program is designed to allow for us to do that where they allow anywhere from fifteen to eighteen percent of the total amount to be used towards administrative expenses to implement the program.
I saw that. I was just wondering if we're, the type of program we're giving out, it seems like we could do better than that. Honestly, I think that's a little high to administer a program like this and twenty-seven thousand. Because that's money that's not going into, that's for people's hands. It's money going into a consultant, which I'm really not all for that. We could figure out a way to do it without that consulting money. I think that's getting more money into the people's hands, which I think is a better idea. So you did answer my question because that is, and that is, thank you.
Okay, council member Dean.
Yes. So this CDBG, like you clarified, it's just extra the CDBG fund for the COVID-19.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, you have a lot of ideas. So I yeah, we, I, I think we, which one direction to the CDBG we want to use it. So that's important. Also, if we do the administrative by city self, probably cost how many person to do that, how long? Also consider, because administrations, like you have twenty-seven thousand dollars, right?
Yes, that's the cap that's allowed, but certainly depending on the direction of council and depending on how council wishes for us to execute the program. We did want to provide council with all of the information as far as what the program allows. If we needed to do it in-house, we certainly can. I did want to make council aware that the amount of work that's involved for processing all of the applications we are going to be receiving is going to be tremendous. I have looked at what some of our neighboring cities are doing, but they also have additional staff in some, in their departments who are helping with administering these programs. So I anticipate, I think some of our neighbors are also bringing additional help. For each applicant, whether it's a business or a resident, whoever applies, we actually have to do eligibility requirements for each application and go through the process of paperwork being brought in, staff verifying the information. So I wanted to provide council with the extent of information as far as what it takes to administer such a program.
Thank you. That's, yeah.
Oh, vice mayor Lau.
Oh, okay. Thank you mayor. Just quick question about the, well, first of all, this is absolutely very thorough, very comprehensive report. There are two things that I'm really interested, I guess the, the one that's connecting financial resources, helping small business. Two weeks ago, El Monkey already awarded ten thousand dollars to the small business and I think they have much more CDBG funding. So they gave away fifty-five, fifty-five businesses. And South Gate also doing it now, they're gonna, yeah, provide ten thousand to each small business, but they already have two hundred thousand, so they already can afford to twenty businesses. But I think, well, I don't know. Do you have a number that you think that we can have to help our local businesses?
Vice mayor, we actually had arranged that we had included for the purposes of our discussion this evening, ranging from anywhere from a thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. And the reason we had a range is because of the different things that could qualify under the grant program. We do want to provide some, some ability for businesses. We may have a business that really only needs a thousand dollars to maybe put their menu online. Or we may have a business that needs ten thousand dollars to hire additional help or hire back the people who may have been temporarily laid off. So we did want to provide that range because we kind, we do have over two thousand small businesses of which about two hundred fifty are restaurants. We wanted to have that flexibility for businesses who may not need ten thousand, who may need a lower amount or a business that may need a greater amount to have them apply. And you are absolutely correct. Some of our neighboring cities have already launched their programs. We were actually waiting for an opportunity this evening to bring it to council. And once we had direction from you to proceed on our ten-point plan, our rep at CDBG is waiting to hear from us to know how we're going to implement our program. So we are ready to go as soon as we have the green light.
Okay, well, it's excellent point. Yeah, so you know, it's, you know, some business maybe just a thousand, but maybe need more, but yeah. But get back to the consulting fee of twenty-seven thousand. I don't know. Is there such a company that they can help us to look into this and administer these applications?
There are. There are actually several consulting firms who specialize in CDBG program administration. And again, we had, for the purposes of this evening's discussion, we included the max amount of what CDBG allows when it comes to program administration. And we did reach out to some firms to see who's available should we need to go that route that we could turn to assistance from the outside. Because what we've seen from our neighboring communities, once these programs have been opened to the public, there really is a ways to get the applications in. Then the requirement to turn, turn it around on our end is going to be significant. And we were being practical and, and realistic in saying there's, at this point, it's Claudia and myself and economic development. We're maximizing the rest of our peers. But getting some help from other professionals would go a long way in expediting our review and eligibility processing.
Okay. Okay, the next question is the rental assistance program. I think we are very generous. We offer a thousand, thousand months, like El Hamra only offer five hundred a month. But what's the, again, you know, how many tenants that we want to help? What's the total number that we're looking?
Well, for the purposes of tonight's discussion, we didn't include a specific number. It's an option. Should the council wish for us to consider launching a rental assistance program, we certainly can. We provided some options as to different ways that could be done. It can be done where we provide a one-time fee, whether it's a thousand dollars, twelve hundred dollars, or we provide five hundred dollars a month for two months, three months. Just keeping in mind that the applicants would have to be income qualified. So each resident that applies for such a program, we would need to go through an income eligibility. And in my presentation, I mentioned a number of the documentation we would be required to have them submit for us to verify their eligibility. And should they qualify, then we can provide them with the funding. If the council decides this evening to provide us direction to go in that route where we launch a rental assistance program, it would be great to also have direction on how much you would set, you would like to set that threshold. And I would anticipate that if we were to launch such a program, there would probably be a great interest. And I am based on what we've seen from our neighboring communities. It will most likely be either on the first come, first come, first served basis or we may have to do some level of a lottery to select the applicants once they've been pre-qualified on eligibility.
Yeah, I think first comes first served is better, but does that, you know, the consulting fee twenty-seven thousand, well, they do the same thing for a rental system program. They have to verify their rental agreement, their job situation and all that. Can they do all this?
Yes, sir. That's where we would, yes. So if we decided to bring in outside help to help us with the processing of the applications, that is indeed what they would be tasked with. First and foremost, we may have individuals applying who apply first. However, we have to verify that they are income qualified and eligible for the program. And it may be that if we go that route and we do a rental assistance program, we do the income eligibility first. Then depending on which batch of individuals qualified, then we would also have to do a lottery to see who from that group gets the funding because we anticipate there would be interest in the program.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Council member Pooh.
Thank you mayor and thank you staff for the presentation. You know, I was going to save this for the council discussion portion, but since others have mentioned it, I too object to the notion that, you know, any of these dollars or, you know, at least not full twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of these dollars going to an outside consultant. You know, these limited resources should go towards direct aid. And, and you know, I feel that this, well, hopefully there will be robust discussion later on too among the council as to what kind of program, programs are going to be the sort of the best suited for our community. I will note too, though, if, you know, it's a bandwidth issue within community development and economic development, the Economic Development Division, then I'm wondering if it's possible we can think outside of the box and utilize staffing from other departments that may be able to cross-train. There are other department staff that, you know, aren't able to, to do their jobs right now and due to COVID-19. And if some of this work, I can appreciate that some of the work might be technical, but I don't think that any of it would be so far advanced that somebody couldn't be trained to process an application, for example, to look for, knowing what, what kinds of things to look for in an application, what, you know, dollar numbers would qualify, so forth and so on. So that's one potential suggestion there to not only help retain some, you know, and perhaps augment some staff hours for those who are not able to do, to do their regular functions at this point in time. And but then also maybe, you know, provide some professional development for them and helps us to preserve these very limited CDBG dollars and, and make sure that they provide as much economic stimulus, direct economic stimulus as we can, we possibly can. So my clarifying question therefore is about, you, you mentioned and with respect to the small business grant program that, that as long as businesses can demonstrate that the customers they serve are low to mod, moderate income level, then those businesses can qualify. So I wanted to flush that out a little bit more here. And can you provide greater detail? How does a business demonstrate that? How does a business demonstrate that? What percentage, do they need to show any particular percentage of their customer base being low mod? And if the, and last, if you, specific question that, and others may come up, if they're able to demonstrate this, whatever that threshold is, and however they're able to document it, then can that direct, I guess, can the CDB, CDBG dollars be used in any way with respect to those businesses? Because I think in other contexts, it seemed inconsistent in the staff report, that some programs seem like the businesses themselves could qualify, whereas in other programs that are kind of similar, not only the businesses need to qualify, but the recipients, the individual recipients would also need to qualify. So if you could clarify those issues for me, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, councilmember Pooh, particularly to businesses. Businesses will need to be in a service area which is residential, where at least fifty-one percent of the residents are low and moderate income persons, and the business's service meets the needs of the service area residents. If the commercial district is composed of stores and businesses that serve local customers that meet the LMI, then it qualifies, or they currently-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can you, so, is it just about geographic location?
It could be either their geographic location within the shaded areas, or it could be that the individuals they service are within that area, within the shaded area.
So how would they demonstrate that, the latter part? Because I think the first part is easy, right? You're saying that if it's geographically located in a CDBG census tract, then they qualify. How does a business qualify via the second route that you're talking about?
That's where we would require for them to provide us with documentation showing what type of business it is that they're, what their business type is, and most businesses have a pretty good sense of who their clientele, who the clientele are that they service. So that's where we would need some information from them. In addition, there's another way, businesses could also show us that they currently employ and retain at least one employee that's low and moderate income. So that's another way.
That would seem to be much easier.
It could, so there's different ways, and that's where, once, for example, if we're, if we get the green light this evening from council to design, we may get direction to do various things with CDBG. If one of those things happens to be the small business grant program, we would flush out those specific details of how do we want to structure the program that we maximize it in our community. I think all of you have made comments which really resonate with staff as far as, we do have a very small pot of CDBG dollars, or any dollars that we're getting right now directly, and if there's a way to maximize it, and reinvest it in our community, we're committed to doing that.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, a business can qualify if it's located in a CDBG census tract, if they can demonstrate that they serve a, what is it, is the word predominantly low-mod audience, or low-mod clientele? Or, and what would-
There's, we're not using the word predominantly, only because as long as they demonstrate that they cater to a low-mod sector. And I think there's different ways they can do that, like I mentioned, most businesses have a pretty good sense of who their ongoing clientele are. I mean, it's definitely, as you said earlier, it's much simpler if they're located in an area that's within already the qualified CDBG area. And in the case of San Gabriel, things are a little easier for us because we have such a huge block of our city that is within CDBG, that I think, I don't anticipate our businesses would have too much of a challenge in showing that they qualify, or that they employ someone that's already low-mod.
Right, so the third, the third prong of this three-part test here, and it is an or test, not an and test, as I understand it, would be to employ or retain a low-mod employee. Okay. I'm also gonna note too, that the allocation of how the, these CDBG funds were to be used was not included in the staff report for this item, it was only included in the presentation. And I think that, you know, I don't know if the, my city attorney needs to weigh in on that, because, you know, if the recommended, the recommended action in the staff report does not include an allocation of funds, and, you know, we may or may not, we, again, when we get to council discussion, I hope we have a robust discussion about this, we may or may not get to the actual allocation of those, of these funds and specific dollar amounts, but, but, you know, I personally find it problematic that it's not part of the staff report, and yet we're being asked to allocate funding based on the presentation alone. Yes, sir?
Mayor Manchaca, if I can make a comment, it's been a little clear in the staff report, councilmember Pooh, and I apologize for that. We have to bring the CDBG portion back to the city council for approval at a future date, because we have to bring the hundred eighty-six thousand dollars into our budget, and then get council approval to allocate that funding. So what we're looking for tonight is the parameters for a program that we would then bring back to the city council for formal approval at our next meeting.
So it does not include actual allocation of the one hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, correct?
Correct, so we're hoping to get those numbers from you tonight, so that we can put those into a staff report to bring back for formal approval at a future meeting.
Okay, understood, thank you. I guess I will reserve the rest of my comments for council discussion, and, because I think we still have public comment to go through, and then to, you know, sort of more formally discuss this item. Thank you Mayor.
Okay, and I'll try and make my clarifying question short, I too have a, some concerns about the twenty-seven thousand dollars, especially if, I would like to see, for example, some kind of rental assistance, because I think it serves both the tenant and our landlords, and I think there's a gap in this program with that group, and so I would like to find ways to, to provide, I understand there's a lot of compliance issues, especially with CDBG, but we need to find ways to, to help our, well, I guess, to be able to execute the CDBG fund so it maximizes its benefit to our community. And the rental assistance is an area that I am concerned, because there's nothing being allocated to them. So when we have further discussion, we elaborate, but for now. Clerk, can you please read any comments that we received?
Sure. We've received quite a few councils, so please bear with me as I go through them. The first comment we received reads as follows, and it's from Michael Schopf. "The city council members, I have lived in San Gabriel since early nineteen eighty-nine, and I am an active voter. I am adamantly opposed to the city spending taxpayer money to subsidize the expenses of the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce or any other organization which advocates political positions regardless of their point of view. You have no right to force me or any other residents to subsidize the political activities of organizations with those whose political positions they disagree. And making the Chamber of Commerce sign an agreement to report how the money spent does not solve the issue. The chamber may argue that the city funds are not used for political purposes. That is irrelevant, because the city funds that reduces costs, like its executive director's salaries, frees up money for political activities. And it does not matter whether such money is used for local political action, or by it providing more funds to the National Chamber of Commerce, which is the major lobbyist. I will keep a record of how each of you votes on this issue to use when I vote in the next council election." The next public comment is from Sherry Cabot, and it reads as follows. "Mayor, Mayor Manchaca, Vice Mayor Liu, and councilmembers. In the best of times, it is difficult to justify giving the Chamber of Commerce thirty-two thousand a year from the city of San Gabriel with no contract. No transparency and no accountability for how this money is being used. But these are the worst of times right now, we are in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, it is the highest unemployment rate since the Great Depression, and is predicted to go even higher. There are so many people out of work, through no fault of their own, struggling to pay rent and utilities, put food on the table, and keep their families safe from COVID-19. Food banks are seeing an unprecedented use, with many families lining up to receive food for the very first time. What about other businesses? I'm sure they would like such a large handout as well. So how do you determine that only the Chamber of Commerce gets such funding? I doubt that the city can afford to make this offer to multiple businesses. The chamber has one paid employee, CEO Sandy Roscoe. Has she reduced her hours or been laid off like millions of other employees? This handout is supporting one business with no strings attached, while others struggle. So many more San Gabriel residents and businesses could benefit from those monies if allocated more wisely, starting with funding the city's own economic development department. That thirty-two thousand dollars could go a long way to help food banks, support senior meals, or establish a city rental assistance program, which would not only help renters, but landlords as well. This would ensure that our tax money stays in the city. President Obama's speech to the 2020 graduates offered an important reminder for these times. It doesn't matter how much money you make if everyone around you is hungry and sick, and that our society and our democracy only works when we think not just about ourselves, but each other." Another public comment is received from George Valdez, and it reads as follows. "Madam Mayor Manchaca and councilmembers, as a thirty-five-year resident of the San Gabriel, of the city of San Gabriel, I've never joined a camaraderie nor tasted food layout of the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce mixers. These networking parties for business members are mostly what they, are mostly what they do and are exclusive for their members. As I looked through the chamber website, I realized these events are far and few in between. I was disturbed to learn that our city council has been subsidizing this chamber to the tune of thirty-one K every year for the past several years, with no oversight or contract to require it to perform on the behalf of all of the San Gabriel. In other words, no strings attached. This expenditure seems to me to be a disproportionate and is a giveaway of our funds. The great majority of the San Gabriel residents do not need this service the chamber provides. In this era of COVID, this is not a time when the business, it's business as usual. There is much sacrifice and suffering among us. The chamber needs to readjust to the new reality like all of us have. I encourage the city council to eliminate the thirty-one thousand expenditure of the Chamber of Commerce, the funds would be better spent addressing the COVID aftermath." That's from George Valdez. The next one is from Sean McMorris, resident, and it reads as follows. "Honorable mayor and councilmembers. The San Gabriel business community helps our city thrive, and helping them upon the road to recovery during this life-threatening, life-altering pandemic is important to the community's overall recovery. That said, it is important that City Hall approach COVID-19 economic recovery with a gravity and reform-mindedness in demand. Business as usual cannot continue because business is not usual. We are in extraordinary times, and a return to normal is not in the foreseeable future. And when normal does return, it will be a new normal. This may not be a bad thing. We consider that the economic normal, we are so used to, which has produced increased homelessness and steadily diminishing middle class, is part of the problem. The COVID-19 pandemic has laid out barren, extreme inequalities that exist in our society as a product of economic policies that are wasteful and dogmatic, economic theories that are exclusive and harmful to so many. Therefore, as you consider how to deal with economic fallout of COVID-19, I request that you employ an approach that is inclusive, measurable, and transparent. This will likely mean redistributing taxpayer dollars so that they have a greater impact on the community as a whole. To that end, I do not support the continued thirty-two thousand dollars subsidization of the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. Continuing to subsidize the chamber is not only fiscally irresponsible, but socially unjust, as it fosters a nexus of power and undue political influence that is democratically corrosive and inherently conflictual. There are far better ways that thirty-two thousand dollars can directly be meaningful impact to San Gabriel businesses and consumers than simply handing it over to the Chamber of Commerce to do what they will with taxpayer funds. For example, the city could use that money for a business grant program or tenant rental assistance, which would also benefit the landlords. San Gabriel, like other surrounding cities, could use the money to contract with the Housing Rights Center, or to help the Asian Youth Center's COVID-19 food assistance program. The city could also use the money to provide San Gabriel businesses with the assistance in navigating the procedures to qualify for state and federal funds relief. The list goes on. In closing, I think the city's Economic Development Division has laid out some good ideas for economic recovery. I also think that City Hall, not the chamber, is the appropriate body to undertake these tasks. It is my firm belief that businesses in the community at large will better benefit if the city government leads the road of, to recovery. Please keep taxpayer dollars under the purview of the City Hall throughout this delicate recovery process." The next comment is from Gary Watt, and it reads as follows. "My name is Gary Watts, and with my family. I have lived in San Gabriel for many years. I saw that the city has proposed to cut funding for the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce, and I think this would be a huge mistake. I enjoyed the chamber seven years ago, and what Sandy Roscoe and other members have done for the business has provided so much value to me and my family. I continue to rely on the chamber, especially during the COVID-19, to see what is happening with our community, and also the other businesses. Since joining seven years ago, I have stepped up to be the board, to be on the board of the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce, where my goal has aligned with not only the chamber, but also with the city promoting local businesses and events. If funding was cut, we cannot provide the same affordable value to our community to help them spend more money on investing their own, in their own businesses. I do not support the cuts being made to the chamber, and I ask that all councilmembers consider their votes against this cut as well. This is the one thing I really care about in the city, and I would fully support the candidates that support our chamber, but also would rally against the members of council if they were to cut funding. Thank you for your time." The next public comment is from Terry Huerta, she's a resident, and it reads as follows. "Dear city of San Gabriel councilmembers, my name is Terry Huerta, and I reside at two-two-four West Wedgewood Avenue in San Gabriel. I am reaching out to you today to advocate for the continued financial support of the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. Over the past several years, I have served as a board of director for the chamber and been part of a team of volunteers that worked hard to serve small businesses and nonprofits in the San Gabriel Valley and beyond. Every element of the chamber is established to provide valuable resources to our business communities. We serve them by providing multi-dimensional mediums and platforms on which to build relationships so that they can grow their businesses. As Director of Development and Communications at the historic Mission San Gabriel, I have received first-time support from the Chamber over our annual fiesta through sponsorships and marketing. But most impactful relationship resulting from being a member, director of the chamber, has been the formation of the Mission San Gabriel Conservancy, a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit. The conservancy was founded to financially support the conservation and preservation of Mission San Gabriel Archangel, the cornerstone of the city. Our founding benefactor is a local San Gabriel businessman that shared in the vision of conservancy and its potential to bring positive change to the Mission District without his financial support. The conservancy would not be doing the crucial work of conserving the Mission's many treasures." And lastly, it should be known- it should be noted that our immediate neighbor, the city of O'Handra, allocates over a hundred thousand dollars to the Chamber, to their Chamber, and our other neighbor, neighboring city Temple City allocates just under eighty thousand to its Chamber as well. The numbers speak for themselves, and we are an example of how the city is standing behind the vital and crucial work being performed by the Chamber at the time when so many of our small businesses and nonprofits need resources, marketing assistance, networking, but most of all, someone who is ready to deeply listen to their needs and take action. I am confident that this council will work hard to put in place an agreement that serves the residents and businesses of San Gabriel so that we can continue to be a great city. Thank you for your time. The next public comment is from Alexa Salamanca from Extra Design. My name is Alexa Salamanca. I have been a resident of the San Gabriel City Council or a resident from the city of San Gabriel for eleven years. I have three separate businesses in San Gabriel, Extra Design, Official Promo, and Office Villa Los Angeles. I pay for three annual business licenses and contribute to the economy of our city. I understand the San Gabriel City Council is considering suspending the funding of the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. I am writing to support, in support of the Chamber, and respectfully requesting that the City Council continue its financial support. When I moved to San Gabriel back in two thousand nine, I learned about the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce and its mission to create different platforms and events to help businesses engage and connect with prospective clients. I was impressed with how the Chamber encouraged businesses to participate in their annual expo. I was surprised that even very small businesses and nonprofit organizations were able to participate since the Chamber kept the cost affordable. I learned this was possible because of the city's financial support to the Chamber of Commerce, a city with a mission helping the Chamber with a vision. I joined the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce in two thousand ten. I served on the Board of Directors for several years, including two terms as the Board President. After I turned out, I continued to serve as an advisor to the Board and the Chamber Ambassador. I made a decision to continue serving because of the difference the Chamber makes in our businesses and nonprofit communities. After one year, I came back on the Board of Directors because Chamber represents a force of community, a legacy which thrives and empowered by helping others. I have devoted my life to the causes that help one another, and the Chamber is one of them. I also served the governing board of the San Gabriel Community Foundation as a marketing advisor at the University of the West Administrator Lifeway Church San Gabriel and former member of the San Gabriel Rotary International, San Gabriel Women's Foundation, and San Gabriel Valley of Hope Worldwide Project Coordinator. The city's support ensures the Chamber can keep their measure in their membership rates affordable. It is important that many small businesses and nonprofit organizations, as possible, be able to obtain these benefits of the Chamber's services such as referrals and connections to prospective clients, monthly networking events, educational forums, annual education and family resources expos, annual business expos, advertising and promotional opportunities on the website, and displaying marketing materials in the Chamber office. The Chamber also keeps their members informed on important events, classes, webinars, and other matters happening in the city and county. Through the Chamber, I was able to bring members of the community large help to create beautiful, meaningful murals at La Casa Community Center. That is the end of the three minutes for that comment. The next public comment is from Tony Gutierrez. He's the managing partner for FCO Solutions. My name is Tony Chi Su Gutierrez. Together with my business partner Alexis Salamanca, I have three businesses, three business licenses in the San Gabriel and contribute to the economy of the San Gabriel, the city of San Gabriel. I joined the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce in two thousand fourteen, or in twenty-fourteen. I have served in multiple organizations in Southern California. I am an active ambassador for the Chamber of Commerce, and I am currently Board of Directors for the Filipino Chamber of Commerce, Orange County, and by far, the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce is one of the biggest, the best chambers in the San Gabriel Valley. I am impressed how the Chamber encouraged businesses to participate in all their annual events from home-based businesses to Fortune five-hundred companies. I recently learned that the city of San Gabriel was considering suspending the funding to the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. The San Gabriel Chamber makes a difference to all kinds of businesses in their communities and beyond. The Chamber initiative is to keep members informed on the coronavirus updates is commendable. Every time I visit the website, the information is updated in a timely manner even before other Chamber websites or community official social media platforms. I always refer my business network to the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce website, especially the coronavirus resources page. Two years ago, Alexis and I incorporated with the addition of two more businesses. The Chamber resources, the networking, the affordable events, and all of the connections and engagements helped our businesses helped our business and the businesses of other grow as well. We have had the opportunity to relocate our business from San Gabriel but decided to stay and become part of the organization that not only changes lives but also gives hope. In twenty-eighteen, Extra Design was awarded the Business of the Year from the California State Assembly. In twenty-nineteen, we became the first Latino owners of an office supply dealership in the state of California. We would not be able to get here if it was not for the support of the incredible connections and the San Gabriel Chamber provided us. Today, Alexis and I have been invited to speak at different events in Southern California, and the message we give is that the right network is the key for success. The San Gabriel Chamber helped us get there. We are one business of many to come. Earlier this year, we held our first office and school supply business expo at the Hilton Hotel. We had more than six hundred ninety business owners visiting us at the complimentary event, and it was an opportunity to give back to the community. The San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce was there to support the city of San Gabriel by promoting upcoming events, Measure SG, and the U.S. Census. I respectfully request that the city continue its financial support to the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. The next comment that I will be reading is from Amy Chang Bonham, and it reads as follows. Dear Mayor Menchaca and Council Members, through the invaluable local reporting from Sean McMorris of Colorado Boulevard, I've learned that the city of San Gabriel has been annually subsidizing the Chamber of Commerce approximately twenty percent of its budget, about thirty-two thousand, through our general fund for close to ten years. Ostensibly, these funds are community promotion, but to my understanding, we have no written requirement of how these funds are to be used for the general public. Don't we already have a community development department in the San Gabriel charged with this mission? At this critical budgetary time, we must squeeze the moles from our general fund while striving more for greater transparency and accountability. The Chamber of Commerce is a private and political entity. Does the Chamber give political donations? Can we see the names of the recipients? Please reconsider carefully this practice of subsidizing the Chamber, and at the very least require annual written accountability of how it uses the funds. The next public comment I'll be reading is from Johanna Jimenez from Floral Expressions, or Johanna's Floral Expressions. Good afternoon. My name is Joanna M. Jimenez, the proud owner of Joanna's Floral Expressions and Gifts. I am reaching out to the city clerk, city council of San Gabriel to share with you my story how San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce has been an important part and a huge support to my business, how the Chamber's efforts helped in building my business. When I started my small flower shop back in two thousand nine in Pasadena, then I moved to the city of San Marino. I didn't know much about connecting with the community. I needed help. Someone recommended to me the Chamber of Commerce. I joined four Chamber of Commerce's San Marino, Arcadia, San Gabriel, and Pasadena. I have to tell you, out of all of the four of them, the one that came alongside of me to help me through my struggles, how to care, support, how to care and support, was the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. I was absolutely amazed. I was not in your city but still received the help I needed, the support, the encouragement, and the connections I was looking for. I was so happy to make new business acquaintances, colleagues, and amazing new friends. To have the help and support of professionalism of Sandy Roscoe, an executive director for the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce, has been breathtaking and fabulous. The growth experience I have had in my business and being successful, I owe a huge part of it to the loving heart of the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce, known as the Chamber with a heart in Sandy Roscoe. I don't know what or how I could have survived without the support of such amazing caring Chamber. To think that the city is actually considering removing their financial support to the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce is unheard of. I can't believe that the city of San Gabriel is considering losing their right-wing man. I can't believe it. Wow, it saddens me. I strongly urge the city of San Gabriel to continue in their financial support to the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber has always worked alongside the city with the city, alongside with the city whenever the city needed its help. Sandy Roscoe has always encouraged us as a business owner in supporting the city and its yearly events, which are fun family events. She has always been an advocate of the city and its businesses. I really feel losing her and the support of San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce, especially during this COVID-nineteen period, is something the city will not recover from. They are both essentials to the city of San Gabriel. We need to continue supporting each other during this challenging time and avoid more difficulties. The next public comment I'll be reading is from Jocelyn Hansen from Buttermilk House Catering. Dear City Clerk, an email came across my desk today regarding the possibility of the city funding of the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce being reduced or eliminated. Let me tell you why I think that's a very bad idea. I understand we are all in uncharted territory with regards to the economy and funding. We all feel the stress of income, less income, or no income, uncertain futures for our businesses, and wondering how to pivot our businesses' models to survive. But that is where the Chamber comes in. We are a strong network of business owners, and we rely on each other, but primarily we rely on the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce and its executive director, Sandy Roscoe, to keep us informed of the new opportunities and as they raise on from our business to the city and state governments. All this is normally highly important but is especially critical now. We need the funding to stay intact for the Chamber. If funding to the Chamber is cut, then services will be reduced and our Chamber will not be thriving, the thriving entity it is now. Many businesses would suffer as a result. Small businesses make up a bulk of the business chambers, Chamber members of the Chamber. We do not have the resources that large corporations have. We need our Chamber to stay fully funded so it can continue to do good work on our behalf and that of the city of San Gabriel. Thank you for your time. The next comment is from Shelly Chia. My name is Shelly Chia. I am a private banker at Union Bank. I cover multiple bank branches, including the two located in San Gabriel. Both branches have been doing business in the city for a very long time, and we are very happy being part of this community. Recently, it was brought to my attention that San Gabriel City Council is considering suspending the funding to San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. I am writing to show support to the Chamber and respectfully request the city continue its financial support to the Chamber. As a banker, I am responsible for new business development. I joined the City, or I joined the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce in two thousand fifteen as I was looking for ways to grow my book of business. The Chamber provides a great platform for the business community to network and do business with each other. We are able to participate in many events because the Chamber keeps the cost affordable. This is very important as we are always looking for ways to be more cost-effective and efficient. San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce has been around since nineteen forty, helping local businesses in the area. It serves as a bridge connecting businesses and the city. It's very important to keep this going with the city's financial support as we mutually benefit from the services offered by the Chamber. Currently, I serve on the Board of the Chamber. Because of my language proficiency in Mandarin and Chinese, Mandarin Chinese and Cantonese, I have been working with the Board expanding outreach efforts to many Chinese or Asian-owned businesses in the city. With my financial experience and knowledge, this is the best way to give back to the community. The next comment I'll be reading is from Scott in Azalea Bowl, and it reads as follows. During our thirty years of entrepreneurship as business owners in the city of San Gabriel, engaging community residents and other businesses, the Chamber of Commerce has been a valuable asset. When Sandy Roscoe joined the Chamber of Commerce, she brought her skills, talent, and a very impressive resume. Sandy captured many with her charisma to make everyone that came out, that came in contact with her feel as the most special person in the world. Her talent with public relations brought the Chamber of Commerce to fruition like never before. She has captured many of her anchor institutions that have connected with other businesses, residents, and many other community members. These businesses have seen Sandy in action, providing resources or services, connecting them to the community. She has provided an influential voice and the power to promote businesses and their growth. The tireless time to organize and promote promotional events and marketing opportunities have been impactful and appreciated by many business owners in our city. From events to cutting, from events to cutting ceremonies, Sandy has all the details in mind. She has been the liaison of many businesses and their governmental entities working together for a common cause of success. These businesses bring revenue and many other benefits to the city and the community members. Please continue to support the city's membership with the Chamber of Commerce, especially during these difficult times when the business also needs help from the community. The next comment I'll be reading is from Donna Lee, Ask Donna One-Two-Three Wellness. Dear City of San Gabriel Elected Official City Clerk, I am communicating today technology or hard work for and within the city of San Gabriel, community-wide. There are organizations who strive to ensure the city of San Gabriel stays strong, especially during this pandemic situation in two thousand twenty. The San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce is one of those organizations. Please ensure the city's contribution, annual and otherwise, to the Chamber continue, and where possible, increase the funding. Sandy Roscoe, Executive Director, is an outstanding compassionate forward-thinking leader, and she does everything in her being to ensure the city of San Gabriel's residents, especially businesses, continue to prosper and remain strong. Personally, I have been a member of the San Gabriel Chamber for over five years. I am also proud to say I am a current ambassador with the Chamber and help promote our members to ensure their success and prosperity. If you have any questions or wish to speak to me, she can be reached at the number provided below. I thank you for continuing to provide funding to the San Gabriel Chamber as we work diligently and hard to keep San Gabriel businesses afloat, and we will all be internally grateful. The next comment I will be reading is from Paul Cole Padilla, and it reads as follows. Dear Council Members, CDBG funds should be used primarily to help people who are poor. However, city staff is recommending that a majority of the CDBG money received by the city be used on businesses, not people affected by COVID-nineteen. To be exact, one hundred thousand of one hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. While many San Gabriel businesses obviously have been very adversely affected by COVID-nineteen, people, not businesses, should be prioritized for help from CDBG funds. I support continued and expanded aid for senior meals program and consideration of its expansion to non-seniors as well as rental assistance programs for people in need using the CDBG funds as other cities, including next-door Alhambra have done, and as advocates for people who are unemployed, poor, and hungry have been calling for COVID-nineteen. I asked the council before, who will hear the cry of war? Will you? Sincerely, Paul Cole Padilla. The next public comment I will be reading is from Camelia Vera, and it reads as follows. Mayor, Council Members, Legal Council Support, or Legal Council and Staff, I am a twenty-five-year resident of the I am a twenty-five year resident of the San, the city of San Gabriel, a member of the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce and on the Board of Directors. We, the Chamber, are the welcome face of the business community in the San Gabriel, in the city of San Gabriel to new businesses. Businesses rely on the Chamber to announce their grand opening through ribbon cutting to the public and other promoting efforts. Without this publicity, the businesses would not do as well because the public would not be aware of the business. Businesses continue, contribute to the city through their sales tax dollars, so this increase revenue to the city. Businesses rely on the Chamber to continue to promote their business at our meetings, on our website and by giving them opportunities to showcase their business to the public through our business expos. As businesses do, while the city gains revenue. Members of the Board visit or call businesses in the city to let them know we are here for them and offer any assistance they need. We have been primary, the primary source of information to them regarding COVID-19 government assistance and members have acknowledged this repeatedly. There are intangible benefits from having the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. Many business owners comment that our Chamber is the most friendly and welcoming. They don't feel pressure to join in right away, but they do so as a result of the way they have been treated. The city of San Gabriel yearly competes for the most business friendly award. How business friendly would it look if you did not support the effort with the funding that is necessary to attract businesses to our area? Having been received, having been received a wealth by the wealth, having been received well by the Chamber, these same business owners tell other business owners about our Chamber. We constantly have to limit our breakfast meetings due to the overwhelming attendance. Many nonprofit organizations benefit from the San Gabriel Chamber, especially the Elks Club of San Gabriel. At our membership breakfast, we provide donations to the Elks Club Dictionary Program so that every third grader can have their own dictionary. Girl Scouts, including Councilmember Pooh's daughter, sell Girl Scout cookies at our breakfast meetings to help their own nonprofit organization. The Kiwanis promote their Easter egg hunt and advertising opportunities. Rotary, Two-One-One and many others also promote their events and services at our events. Finally, the Chamber has given the city's staff lots of opportunities to present information regarding efforts the city is trying to accomplish and we have been very supportive by giving them time to discuss the tourism fee census efforts and the citywide community events and measure as she. Without these opportunities to speak, the city would be very hard pressed to gain support in the immediate community and beyond for these efforts. Please preserve the funding that brings and keeps business revenues in the city. Thank you. And that is all.
Thank you, Marilyn. Okay, now we'll proceed to council deliberations and discussion. We'll start with Vice Mayor Lau.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, like I said, this is very thorough, very comprehensive, ten point plan for recovery. A couple of things, you know, there is proposal, maybe we should have a COVID-19 testing site, but because the money, the one that we have is not even half of the, the cost. But it's good news, the good news is, you know, San Gabriel Herald Christian Community Clinic, they start testing today and as a matter of fact, this week they have hundred people make reservation already. And it's a free test to everyone, but they have to be qualified. It's, it's for healthcare workers, restaurant workers and supermarket workers, pretty much all essential people that work in, in those fields. So I think, you know, to have another site from the city, maybe because the funding, if we have the money, we go for it. Another thing I like is the, the business, small business grants. You know, like I said, El Monte is doing it, South King's doing it, Buena Park is doing it and, you know, many cities are doing it. And they all offer ten thousand, but we want to offer from thousand to ten thousand, I think that's fine, but it just, you know, takes more work. And, you know, okay, but hundred thousand total from CDBG funding, but I want to change the rental assistance program. You know, I think a thousand per month is a little bit high. I would think five hundred like Alhambra is doing, but they have three hundred thousand dollars, you know, to put into this program. But we only have, I don't know, a hundred eighty. So we, I, I, my suggestion is just offer five hundred per month, up to three months, but then we can give more people, maybe sixty households, but then they have to prove, they have to show some kind of a certification, you know, that lost a job. But they have to prove how much they paying the rent and they have to show the rental agreement. But that, if we offer sixty, then that would bring up to ninety thousand already. So, you know, with those two programs, hundred thousand for a small business and ninety thousand for tenants assistance program, that's already hundred and ninety thousand. So I don't know, you know, we can't have any additional money. But then without, we saw the consulting fee. So I don't know if we can train our staff to do this type of thing because all of them just apply online. We can offer, you know, certain time, maybe a week or even some city offers three days just for them to apply. And then someone has to go through all, each application and to qualify that. But I, I, I would like to promote this type of program, you know, ten points. As a matter of fact, I was trying to pass out the flyers to all the restaurants, but then because this COVID-19, the restaurant is not quite open yet, so I didn't do that. But I went all, went to all the supermarkets, passing off flyers for people to take the COVID-19 test in supermarkets. They welcome any types of the city help. So another thing is maybe, well, you know, we have the data base and it's easy to shoot the, the flyer or, you know, one page of information to all the business owners and they can get it right away. Or I can help, you know, you print both English and Chinese languages. I can deliver to all the businesses and we can promote this. So I think this is very good plan, but to, you know, to make it work, I think it just needs manpower and, you know, we have to work harder to make it work. It, it looks good on the papers and well, we kind of help the businesses, we give grants, but then it takes time. Takes, uh, diligent works to, to, to screen out the applicants. And, and same thing for the tenants assistance program. But they all need our help and no doubt about it. So I think it's about the time that we can use the CDBG money to help these needy people. So that's my thought.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with some of the comments that Councilor Lau gave. I think, I don't want to get into the, the issue of like a lottery for rental assistance. I think if we lowered it to five hundred, that makes sense because then it helps out more people. I mean, I don't know the exact number, but I think we should, I don't know how many people in San Gabriel as far as demographically qualify. I know it's a good number, but I know we're not going to be able to get everybody. That's, that's a given. So I think a little bit of help to more people, in my opinion, is probably better. If staff has comment on that, whether the thousand is, is a better number, I'll, I'll take that under advisement. But I really agree with Councilmember Lau on that, that getting a little bit to more people is, is a better way of doing it than end up with a lottery situation. And then as far as I heard some public comment regarding helping businesses, we have to remember that helping businesses does help our local businesses especially, help employ people locally. And so if we're helping them out, it is actually helping people get their jobs back and it's helping people get work, which means hopefully if they're getting a good job from a local business, they won't be poor for long because they'll have a job. So it's not like we're taking from one person and giving to another. The jobs are what drives our tax base. The jobs are what drives our employment. So I don't see this as giving to poor or rich. I think it's helping our community in different ways. The rental assistance helps some people that may have lost their jobs. The assistance to businesses may help a business that otherwise may have not succeeded or may have gone under, keeps them alive. And I can tell you with my experience as a small business owner, a, a, a five or ten thousand dollar injection in one month can make your entire year successful because you're able to service your customers and all of a sudden more of them come back. You have a little bit more, a little more help on the employee side or you get that advertising, you get more people in there and you're not, you don't have to lay people off. You can actually hire additional people. It's amazing what just a little bit of cash assistance can do for a small business. And I think we should cap it, some way to cap it on how much a business makes in revenue. Keep in mind, we do have a huge reduction because of COVID and, and someone could have made a lot of money last year and all of a sudden they're really, really doing poorly on the brink of, bankruptcy, but so it shouldn't be a hard and fast number, but we do need to keep that in mind. Some of these larger businesses, you know, I'm talking like, you know, like Hilton, we wouldn't be giving them money, for example. I mean, like you literally small business, eight, ten employees max, maybe cap it out at a certain amount of gross income. Because net income is really hard to determine, but gross is really easy to determine. As far as the programs in general, I, I like the creative thinking. I think it's a very positive. The way it's put together and like Councilor Lau has said, there's some other cities that have done similar things. I haven't seen anybody around us that's been as comprehensive in so many different areas and I like that. We're not just focused on one thing. We are focused on a lot of different ways of improving and ways of recovering. So I think that's a positive. Overall, I generally support this. I think it could use a little bit of tinkering and obviously we're not doing anything in stone. I mean, I, I, I'm a yes vote. I'll just say that. It's just, there may be some stuff that may come back to council or may need to come back to council because I'm sure some things are going to change, but overall I really do appreciate the effort. So thank you. Thanks to your entire staff. I know it's more than just you two.
Thank you. Councilmember Pooh?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, in general, I, I, I like the, the ten points in general. I would note that, you know, for veterans of the council that, you know, a lot of these items are, are also part of our business friendly action plan, which perhaps never really quite got off the ground, but and, and I, and I feel like, you know, it feels gratifying that, that these items then are now, you know, going to be implemented. Especially at this point in time when small businesses in particular need the help so much. I want to highlight the three in particular and tie them together. One is the Shop Local Campaign. The other, the second is implementing best practices and the, the third is sharing success stories. I actually think, you know, this is more intangible and, and doesn't have to do with the programming of funds as much, but, but I think that it's, it is going to be really important for us to be able to highlight and promote not just, I think, you know, perhaps some specific businesses, but the overall business community in San Gabriel. So how these tie together in my mind is the implementing of best practice. I think that's a great idea to be able to give businesses a PPE starter kit. And I'll go one step further. Councilmember Liu mentioned the, or Vice Mayor Liu mentioned the, the testing site that was beginning at the Health Christian Health Clinic, which is a great first step, you know, for, for our community to have more access to testing. And all these things can tie together because I, I think that one of the things that will determine winners in the post, in the post-management world, and I, by post-management, I mean post-management of COVID. So right now we're in the pre-management stage, meaning and this isn't, these are not, you know, LA County terms or part of any kind of plan. I'm, I'm, I'm just, these are terms I've heard elsewhere in the business community. So, you know, until we have a therapeutic treatment or a vaccine, we are in the pre-management world. So in the post-management world, or, or even, you know, even in the sort of reopening stage in, in the pre-management world, I think some of the winners are going to be those businesses that have a brand, an image of cleanliness and safety and also of those who, you know, were able to continue to strive and be successful during this period of time. And so what I'm suggesting here is that as part of this, you know, part of Shop Local, part of providing PPE, part of those businesses having access to testing is to be able, and, and part of sharing success stories. And sharing success stories, I think, should not just be about the community kindness campaign that we began at the very beginning, you know, when I was still mayor. I think that it should be actual success stories because businesses like Petrillo's seem to be doing very well. I think Bo Pomofo is doing well. I'm sure that there are many other businesses that are actually continuing operations and, and they, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm sure their revenues are not as robust as they would be in, uh, absent COVID. But, but those kinds of stories I think are inspiring. They're inspiring to other businesses. They're inspiring to entrepreneurs. They paint the image of a city that has small businesses that, you know, struggled, but struggled and survived and succeeded. And then we combine that with an image of, of a city with businesses that are clean and safe, that have PPE, that have employees who can, can get regularly tested. And then you all of a sudden create an image of, of a place that I think in the, in this COVID time will, will, would be, have a little bit of an edge with respect to where people choose to go. Like, you know, you're creating a, a place that is safe, a safe place to eat and shop and also a place that has these, you know, great local success stories of mom and pop, you know, restaurants or other shops. And predominantly that I think is, is a big part of our local economy. So with respect to the comments of some of my colleagues here, the rental subsidy, I think that, that that's a good idea. I, I really wish we had a lot more funds to be able to go around. I, you know, the small business grant program could be a, a good idea too. My concerns are only that, you know, there's no question, I don't think any of us are in disagreement about the desire to help tenants who are struggling or to help small businesses who are struggling. The question in my mind is whether a thousand dollars is going to really make a difference for that individual or for that business. It may provide a business with, you know, thirty days of more runway. But the question is whether or not then, does that really going to, you know, if there were a way of being able to target it so that it really makes the difference between a business surviving or not surviving, or a tenant being able to continue to stay in place or not stay in place, then of course, then of course, every dollar that could be spent that way is, is one hundred percent absolutely worth it. The problem is, it's hard for us to identify those kinds of cases upfront and then also to measure the sort of impact or success. And then also to measure the sort of impact or success on the backend. Unless they, you know, really do stick around and then we can, you know. Then we can quantify and and qualify, you know, their their experience and the success of the programs. So, yeah, I just, you know, it's it's a very limited pot of money. And I would just say that I still feel some of the other items that came up, came up in conversations. What is really going to be needed to restart this, the economy, especially the local economy? And in my mind, it's about getting people spending again. So, for example, another thing I just recently heard about is this idea of consumption coupons. And this is something that has been done in other countries where. The government actually provides a discount to people to buy durable goods of some kind, la- larger ticket items. That helps stimulate the spending, that creates the jobs, you know, so forth and so on. And I think in a situation like this, where we're in, you know, especially like in the. Even now in these pre-management times, I think that. There's so much uncertainty that consumers, and and there's so much, there's been so much job loss that consumers are. Are going to be reluctant to spend. That's like seventy percent of our economy is consumer spending. So the idea here is to be able to leverage these very limited CDBG dollars to. Actually stimulate spending and consumption. That not only helps the consumers who are doing the spending, but the businesses at which those those consumers are are doing the spending. So, you know, this may be more ambitious than what we can possibly do. But but the idea of a. Community coupon, for example, you know, if a business can be qualified just by their virtue of where it's located. If it's just located in a CDBG track, census tract, then we can go to those businesses and offer them this idea where. For their customers, they can offer a coupon or they, you know, that that essentially provides, let's say, twenty-five percent off. That leverages each CDB job, CDBG dollars, three to one. Because somebody will come in, spend seventy-five cents on the dollar, you know. And with the coupon, which the business then turns around and and turns into us, the city, you know, we we we. Spend, we supplement with the remaining twenty-five cents. That's just one example of potentially how it could work. And again, you know, I recognize, you know, we're we're small. And we're limited in terms of funding, in terms of people power. But it's that kind of thing that I think would actually be the the smartest use of the of the funds. Because, again, you're just, then you're leveraging the CDBG dollars to incentivize further spending. And incentivize that spending in local businesses. So it's almost like a double benefit. Using those same dollars. But at the end of the day, you know, if all we are really able to do is sort of in a blunt force way. Provide assistance for tenants who might be in need. Or provide assistance to small businesses who are struggling. You know, and and just sort of direct grant type of way, then, you know, that that's. At the end of the day, to me, that's okay as well. I just don't think it's as strategic nor as effective as. As it as a program possibly could be. So I hope, and then the last thing is like, you know, you know, it comes back to what. I was saying earlier in my questions, which is. The rec, you know, the recommendation here just says, it says to approve the ten-point plan for recovery, resilience and reinvestment. And provide direction to staff to begin implementation, assuming as all the program details are completed. The presentation was was more detailed and had more specifics and did request the allocation of funding. We don't see that here in the staff report. And I feel like it it's hard to approve something if the program details are not yet completed. I do think this warrants further discussion and then, you know, perhaps, you know, as Mark had mentioned. If it if it's going to be brought back to be brought back to council sometime in June. For final approval, then some, you know. First of all, I think this the recommended action or the staff report needs to, or the staff report needs to match up to what's actually being requested. And and I think that that. Requested program should match up to what council here is saying that, you know, they're they're in support of. I would venture that I don't have any, I I have no qualms at all with the additional. What is it? Twenty-five thousand dollars for the senior meals program. That's that has seemed to be an extremely beneficial program. And that's gone from thirty-five, I think, or so participants at the beginning to now well over two hundred. So that portion, you know, I only question whether or not it's enough. And whether, you know, we could even do do even more good in in that regard. With respect to other allocations. I would, oh, and and I would prefer to see some allocation towards. A program that does incentivize spending, you know, and therefore it does not only subsidizes the 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 consumers. Or the community members who are. The residents, these the low mod, you know, residents in the in the CDBG census tracts. But also the businesses that are also that are also located in those tracks. I would otherwise, you know, and just one. One quick word on testing, as Councilmember Liao had did mention. Yeah, because the the Health Christian Community Center or Healthcare Center has started their testing site. And the amount of funds that we would have in this CDBG pot, or it's just not enough to really make a difference. Then, yeah, that's the only reason why I I'd say let's focus on actual economic programs versus testing. Because testing, I do believe testing and tracing is the most critical component to to be able to reopen safely and confidently. It's just that this pot of funds is not enough to really make a difference. And then we had a very productive conversation with the county today, too, to potentially try to expand. You know, upon the work that Harold Christian is doing and and really provide even more testing and tracing for the entire West San Gabriel Valley area. So I I think that it would be great to have our own test site with using these CDBG funds. Other cities have done it, but. And in those cases, when you use CDBG funds to do testing, that test site is only, you can only use it for. Residents of your own city. It's not a county, you know, test site that's you, you know, go on to the website and. And get a an appointment for. But. But, you know, more testing is better than less. So so I'm not faulting any of the other cities that have used their CDBG funds for this purpose. It's just that our pot is so limited that I think we are, there it's a better better use of it to directly support. Some of these economic economic programs that are are being proposed. So, a- and there's the testing that's now being provided, you know. Via federal funding ultimately, they, because Health Christian is a federally qualified health clinic.
Does that conclude your comments?
I I'm just looking back and forth. I I I'm really against the idea of CDBG, these CDBG funds being spent on any kind of. Consultant. I feel like. They should be, you know. They should go towards. To help as many individuals and and businesses as we can. And and by paying a consultant to carry out one of these programs, you know, we're we're. To me, that's a squa, you know, that squanders the the limited funds that we have. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, council member Pooh, I just wanted to add regarding the testing, just for the public to know that. Councilmember Pooh and myself and our city manager, we've been having ongoing conversations about how we can bring a test site. Harold Christian has one now, but it has limited capacity. It's only for essential workers. And we are trying to expand the scope, so it's not just essential workers. And it's not just people in in San Gabriel. It would be the San Gabriel Valley. And some of these other cities have used their CBG funds, but it's very limited. One of our neighboring cities could only have it for a month and and that's all. So we're looking for long-term solutions so we can have a testing site in place for three, four, five months. And if we can get these funding assistance through the Harold Christian with the federal funding that they do have. And LA County, I mean, that that would be a benefit. So we don't, so we can protect our CBG funds because they are very. Limiting. So I just want everyone to know it's an ongoing conversation. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Hi, I just want to, you know, be back on this Harold testing site. Yeah, they're federal qualified, so they get paid by federal government. But also they take uh take all the insurers, you know, for instance, Ecal Medicare patients. And and if they are not insured, they also accept them. But it's not limited to CEO of San Gabriel. You know, it's open. Anybody that near San Gabriel. So it, you know, because it it, they have to serve this. And give our valley residents and business anyway. So it it's not just from San Gabriel. Because they don't get any funding from our city, CDBG funding. So they're open to everybody. Yeah.
You are correct. I apologize. You're right. It's for everyone. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, next is Councilmember Ding.
Yeah, yes, I think. The community development, the good report, and also it's a lot of consideration gave it to us. There's a lot of the option. Yeah. I I like also like, first of all. So make sure when we open, it's a, it's a, it's a safety. Yeah, it's like. You know, still continue like some donation for the PPE and this PPE. Help a city, but I was, city hall, but also for the small business and when they study. So if they don't have in like surprise, so maybe can help them too. Yeah, that's. Part of the CDBG if we can have the some portion fun. Or the donation is, it's better, right? Not cost our city money. And I also for the for the senior meal program. So the question looks like we're through the YWCA. And the restaurant, it's the, it's in the most in the hours, San Gabriel City or. Different city. Maybe we can asking them some sometime, some meal. Maybe that can help our local restaurant to to provide it.
Councilmember Ding, this is Director Perez. I can I can address that question. So YWCA is the city's current meal provider. So they have provided the senior congregate meals when we had it at the Adult Recreation Center prior to COVID nineteen. And they are also assisting with the delivery that we are currently doing and providing the meals now on a weekly basis. That we are delivering to our seniors. So they are, they are the meal provider and they have caterers that they utilize. That on a, on an ongoing basis, and some of that has changed because of COVID, because the the number of meals that they're providing to. Our our city as well as other cities have increased so much. I think maybe the program that you're thinking of is the Great Plate Program, which is a a program that would would be available. And open to local, local restaurants. And I know that economic development has made that information available to our local businesses. And to our local restaurants. And that is, that is a program that they would be eligible to apply for. There is an application process. And there are some dietary requirements that they have to comply with. But YWCA is concurrent, is continuing to serve our seniors. They have capped us, if you will, at a hundred and fifty seniors. So above and beyond that, at this point, we are purchasing additional meals for those participants. And we we are looking to hopefully get some of them connected with the Great Plate Delivered Program as well. So hope, hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. Also, the CDBG fund, I I like it. Also, maybe like this, a Humbrad is helped the rental assistant. But the thousand dollars looks like it's too too much. So maybe we can, we we may find the the. Right figure, like examples, the five hundred dollars, the rental assistant. For CDBG also can like. Your recommendation, like a small business for the for the like grant. But is it possible also help the resident tenant also help the resident? And the business tenant to the the to for the rent assistant. That's a, I, my suggestion, maybe also, it's easy to to. To administer, like always based on they are the income level or. Maybe, I don't know, so it's easy to for the resident in the in the in the business. As on the same core program or just or maybe different guideline?
Councilmember Ding, I can answer your question. If we were to design a small business assistance group program. For the businesses that apply, rent will be a qualifiable use. So if you were providing them assistance. They could use the grant money towards overhead expenses, rent, utilities, business services. So there's a variety of things they can use it for. That would be a qualifiable expense.
Okay. So can can we combine these two programs together or not?
Ultimately, we we can design a program, we can do the rental assistance, we can do a small business grant. It's really at this point at the discretion of city council and how you would like for us to utilize our CDBG funding sources.
Okay, thank you. For, okay, and for for my, the also self, the the Alumia Association, like today I give it to the. I mean, it's like some, I don't mean that they have the website to help the. They they program the design for the for the restaurant. Online order. Yeah, it's free. So especially for the for the COVID nineteen, it's free. And I know I also call him the the people designer website. They also, not just for the restaurant, they also help the like some service. Office, they need like help for the make appointment. Even even, I don't know, the city hall, like right now, some mostly it's a, it's a. The the resident coming in, like they want to apply something. They they maybe their website also can help the the make appointments. That's I let you let the, I mean, know that. Okay. And I I like the gift card ID idea, but I, but the point, it's the gift card. It's maybe, I I mean, not maybe, it's it's one of one of them, like spend the 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 gift card to our local business. And yeah, so I wish the week the, your department can help like, because it's a limited fund. So how to, yeah, we consider all the kind of expense. So how much total we can spend for the rental assistant, for example, okay? And the senior and, and a gift card. Yeah. That's a, that's my consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ding. So I, you know, I understand there's financial constraints because most of the conversations centering around CDBG funds. But I would like to know if there's other types of funds that are still available that we can use to subsidize some of these programs, because I think we're all in an agreement that we do want some type of rental assistance program for both businesses and, and residential. Because I think providing a roof, whether you're a business owner or you're an individual, I mean, it's so important. And I think we all have the sense of urgency to, to help both, to get the economy going. So I don't know how that allocation would work, but I, I do wanna see if there's other types of monies that might be available for us. Regarding the the rental assistance, I just know that every city who's done it has received an overwhelming response. And so I think we need a plan for that in advance. It's going to happen. The needs are tremendous. So whether it's a lottery or maybe specific areas, make sure it's evenly allocated. But I think that needs to really be, we need to spend more time and kind of thinking it through what makes sense. I do wanna commend the staff for actually canvassing to every single business. This plan will help everyone. And I know you've asked city council members to also assist going forward, especially with the language. With the translation, there, there's, there's need for that. But to canvas every single business is pretty, you know, commendable. I also wanted to, let's see, mention the fact that there has been businesses that have come to me thanking me. Not really me, it's the staff, but to finally have that level of communication, not finally, but, but this ongoing contact with the city and to provide those resources and for us to actually sit down with them like Claudia, working through the process and understanding how complicated it is. And, and we hear about these programs and they're not even in place. And so that gets very frustrating, I think, for so many business owners, because you get so many conflicting information. The Great Place Program is a perfect example. I don't think anything was put in place till two or three weeks later. So we had seniors calling, we had businesses calling because they wanted to participate, but the fine details were not in place yet. Let's see. I also wanted to suggest, I, I know bigger cities are doing this, like Long Beach and Pasadena. But when we start thinking about outside the box, I, I know for some of these cities, they're, what they're trying to do is look for streets that we can close down so our restaurants could have more space so they can be in line or compliant with the health guidelines, the distancing guidelines. And so I can't think of, of a, of the right street right now, but I think it would be really helpful if we could think about that, because that's a, it's a no cost. But it would just have such an impact on businesses to be able to spread out and really be able to operate at 100%. So those, that was something that kind of came to mind as I was reading this. But this is just, you know, I applaud you. Like I mentioned earlier in the beginning, you know, we're kind of entering a new era and you, you've really risen to the, to, to COVID and everything that's taken place. But as many have said, you know, there, there will be greener pastures and maybe business will be done differently. But I think we're really gonna be better for this because we're really all kind of, there's just so many great ideas out there. It's kind of exciting from that perspective, but we really have to dig deep and really be there for, for our community, whether it's a resident with their rental or if it's a business. So I, I do also agree with Councilmember Pooh that I don't think we're ready to really approve. I think tonight was more, this is the first time that we've heard about this as a council. And it's, it's such a key part of what our economic development team is going to do. What, how our city is going to respond responsibly financially. And I, I think we need a little bit more time. And so I'm hoping, I, I've seen you take lots of, you know, copious notes. And, and maybe you need to do some follow-up with some of the council members, because I think we all kind of had some, some great ideas. But I think we still need another meeting to kind of, if you can bring this back and have more clear cut, you know, what, what would be the allocations? For example, the rental assistance program, you know, what kind of allocation are we looking at for? Is it 50/50? Is it 40/60 between residential and commercial? And, you know, some of the other ideas that were tossed out today from Councilmember Pooh and Councilmember, well, Ding mentioned the gift cards, but maybe looking into that a little bit more. Maybe we can do, do something simple. It doesn't have to be, you know, long drawn out, maybe if we can find some other type of funding, because with CDBG, it's so limiting. We're handcuffed. I mean, there's just so much paperwork that's required. Maybe there's something else we can do, but use our gift cards, because that's a direct benefit to our businesses and to our families that are in need. And so with that, I, I just wanted to, to make sure, just ask my, my colleagues if we can just table this for the next meeting. Unless there's some objections, strong objections, like I see Councilmember Pooh's about to click there. I can't see anyone else, so go ahead.
Oh yeah, I just wanna say, no, I think, I think overall the program is definitely on the right track. And I think Councilmember Harrington mentioned, like, you know, I think some of the details need to be drilled down. And there, you know, some tweaks here and there. Because without, without those specifics, if the details aren't yet completed, I think it's hard for us to be able to approve, you know, anything that, and so, and so I look forward to it coming back with some further detail. And I, I do want to actually, you know, commend staff for, for putting in a, I think, a lot of time and energy and thought into this. And I think that it's definitely, you know, I have not heard of any other city having a 10-point plan. So kudos on, on having the most number of points. Thank you.
That's true. Okay. Do I have any objections?
I did have a question for Armani. So I just wanted to see, Armani, if anything in your plan, because one of the recommendations was for you to begin implementation. So is there anything in there that's time sensitive or is there any part of it? Because I think part of the recommendation said to direct you to begin working. So I, I would be fine with, you know, providing direction, not approving the plan, but, you know, start working on the elements you can and then start, you know, interacting with council and figuring out where we can fix, fix some, or make some of the finer points.
Councilmember Harrington, you actually brought up a, a good point, and I think I've heard all of you say it in different ways. So there were really two issues we were, we were trying to provide to council tonight. The first was the conceptual 10-point plan. We've identified various tools that we think we should start implementing. The Digital Media Toolkit, Guide to New Ways for Commerce, Shop Local Campaign, Saving on City Fees, Expedited City Services, Implementing Best Practices, Connecting to Financial Resources, City Hall Business Concierge Services, Promoting Available Sites and Sharing Our Stories. That was kind of our 10-point plan. Now, separate from that is what do we do with CDBG, the CDBG supplemental funding? If at all, I think the discussion we've had tonight has been definitely helpful to us because I feel like we're on the same page with council when it comes to our conceptual 10-point plan. It would be great if we were to get the green light to move forward with implementing pretty much the 10 points, then separating CDBG and bringing that discussion back separately. Because that is a separate pot of money that we are going to receive, that we need to act on. And I think we've gotten some really good feedback from council this evening as to what you'd like for us to do and bring back to you. So it would be great if, if we could get some direction on whether or not we've got the green light to start implementing our 10-point plan minus the CDBG component that we bring back, because we do wanna get some of these things out to our businesses. We can certainly bring all of it back again. But it would be great, even if you don't wanna approve the plan, but give us direction as to where you all are. So we know if we can start implementing some of it, we just, we'd like to get started sooner than later. We certainly will bring back a separate CDBG discussion item where we would get clear direction from council. We'll bring a recommendation of how we can distribute the various programs and have just the discussion on CDBG. But it would be great if, if we know where we stand on, on the conceptual 10-point plan.
Yeah, I think that's where my, my question was getting to, because a lot of those items are not, there, there are some staff time commitments, but they're not financial resource heavy. And there's some, like I would say, that's, we always say it's the low-hanging fruit that we can get to with leverage, minimal effort and get, get a lot of these balls rolling and then come back and fine tune it. Because like any of these things aren't like we're committing to a path and it's irreversible. These are just, we're starting to roll some things out that are gonna help our community cope with a lot of this. And then when it comes down to how we're going to program the CBDG, that's when we can have a deeper discussion.
So I, I think, I agree. Thank you, Councilmember Harrington for bringing that up. If, if you just need direction, that necessarily a vote. I, I believe everyone is, is very pleased with the 10-point plan. It's all very focused CDBG funding. So I don't think we need to vote. Is that, where's our city ma, our city attorney? I, I think you have direction to move forward. Again, if there's any objections, but.
Speak his name and he appears. Yeah, you, I think this is, my understanding is you were just giving direction tonight, which I think has been received. And I guess it's coming back. So I don't, no formal action is necessary.
Okay. Okay, great. Then let's move on to the next item.
Consideration to amend Urgency Ordinance Number 668 temporarily restricting residential and commercial evictions for non-payment of rent due to COVID-19. We'll turn it over to our city attorney, after which presentation will be made by Deputy City Attorney Norma Tabarez.
Before we turn it to our, oh, I'm sorry, city attorney, will you be discussing the recusal from Councilmember Pooh? I guess not. I'm sorry.
I, I understand that. So we had a discussion at the last meeting about conflicts. I understand and provided an opinion that we didn't, we thought that the public generally exception meant that all of the council members could participate, even if they're renters. Since that time, I've heard that Councilmember Pooh has an interest in, in recusing himself from the discussion, which he's certainly free to do. It does raise the, yes? I just say, you know, I have thought about this long and hard. And, you know, upon further reflection, I just don't feel I can be objective and unbiased about this issue. So even though I'm not legally required to do so, I will recuse myself on tonight's, this agenda item and discussion. So I will just, you know, leave the meeting and log off and try to rejoin once the item has been completed, so that we can just do the, I can still hear the city manager's report and, you know, council member reports and also the second, second installment of public comment for, for the evening. So thank you all.
Okay, goodbye, Councilmember Pooh. We'll see you soon. City Manager Keith, can you just let the public know and remind council members about this particular ordinance and the fact that we need four votes, correct?
That's right. This was originally an urgency ordinance and if it were to be amended, it would need to take place. The amendment would need to be effective immediately in order to avoid any gaps. Therefore, this is, any amendment to the existing ordinance is presented as an urgency ordinance. As you mentioned, urgency ordinances require a four-fifths vote, which means now that we've got four members, that means it requires unanimous vote of the remaining members. And with that, I would like to turn it over to my associate, Norma, to provide a very brief, I mean, we've all been through this a couple of times. We're gonna try to present a very brief report to kind of summarize things and then a suggestion on how to structure the discussion. With that, I'll turn it over to Norma.
Yeah, Keith, I also wanted to remind you and Norma that we still have to hear from the public. So once she gives her brief summary, then I'm gonna turn it back to the city clerk for public comment.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The item before you, as has been mentioned, is to consider amending the previously adopted eviction moratorium, which restricts evictions of residential and commercial tenants who are unable to pay the rent as it relates to COVID-19. Before I continue, I would like to note for the record that the city received correspondence from Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles concerning this item and copies of the letter that is dated May 15th have been distributed to council by email prior to the meeting. By way of background, subsequent to the passage of the city's ordinance, state and county authorities issued directives that extended further protections for residential and commercial tenants affected by COVID-19. And as the council may recall, the county order exempted cities that had their own moratoria, which includes our own city of San Gabriel. At the last meeting, staff recommended the council simply repeal the local ordinance in order to let the county order take effect. At the time, the council decided to let the city ordinance stand and to revisit as circumstances evolve. Council also instructed staff to come back with recommendations to amend the city ordinance in a way that could potentially align with some of the changes that took place at the county level. And so we've come back with a menu of proposed amendments to the ordinance that have been prepared for council's consideration. And these policy choices are laid out in the staff report. It, they're broken down by their different, different components as with respect to things such as repayment period, verification, notices and either loosening or adding additional restrictions. And so before we proceed with a recommendation in terms of how to structure the discussion, can, I would like to send it back to mayor at this point to open it up for public comment.
Okay, thank you. So the time for public comment on this item is now closed. Assistant City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Good evening, Mayor. Please bear with me as we have a few public comments to read through. The first one is from Shelley Chia. And it reads as follows. My name is Shelley Chia. I'm an investment property owner. I am writing to express my opinion about the proposed 12-month restriction on residential and commercial eviction for non-payment of rent due to COVID-19. I invest in real estate and do not have a mortgage loan on my property and do have a mortgage loan on my property. Without monthly rental income, I may be able to cover the mortgage obligations for several months, but certainly not for the entire 12 months. I believe a lot of rental property owners are experiencing similar situations. We landlords are facing a lot of challenges and financial strain during this difficult time. We need to fulfill many obligations. We need to fulfill many obligations, including timely mortgage payments, property tax payments, insurance and other maintenance costs. We are all facing unprecedented circumstances as the pandemic continues to disrupt daily life. I feel it's reasonable that tenants will repay the unpaid rent amounts within six months of the emergency's expiration. The next comment I'll be reading is from Lancer Investments LLC. From Felix Lu. Hi, my name is Felix Lu. I'm a property manager at the Hotel Plaza located at 227 West Valley, Sam, West Valley Boulevard, San Gabriel, California 91776. I heard the city went to the extent to extend the rent payment for 12 months. I am strongly disagree because the landlord needs to pay his mortgage to the bank. If we cannot collect payment from the tenant, we will file bankruptcy due to lack of payment. Our company already suffer major impacts from the COVID-19. We had only collected less than 50% of our rent this month. This is not fair to the landlord if the city offer 12-month payment to the all tenants. Also tenants will take advantage even though they cannot pay rent. Or even though they can pay rent. Please consider not to extend the payment. Thank you for your understanding. Hope you make the right decision. The next comment is from Justin Chan and it reads as follows. Hi, City Council. I would like to express my thoughts on the item 6D of the agenda regarding the payback period of rent owed during the eviction moratorium until June 2020. I do not believe on the payback period being 12 months due to the following. One, leases will end before that period. Two, allows more time for tenants to default and the landlord property owners to carry the burden for an extra year, which could dramatically affect them. Three, six months is the end of the year, which allows for 2021 to start off on the right foot and boost morale for the coming year, not having to carry baggage over 2021. The next comment is from Patsy Moss from BP International Inc. Dear members of the city council, I am writing in opposition to extend eviction moratorium and payback period for commercial tenants. I have been working as a retail property specialist for many years and have represented many landlords in the city. The proposed extension of the eviction moratorium and extended payback period to one year will be detrimental to many commercial landlords. Please understand that many commercial landlords are small businesses too. Many depend on the rental income as their retirement main source of income. Commercial landlords are not getting the support from lenders either. They do not have the luxury to hold back mortgage payments for months while they cannot collect rent. Further, most commercial tenants are guided by a specific written agreement and not all lease terms are the same. They defer in length, uses, et cetera. With the current situation, I don't think landlords will actively evict viable tenants and rather will work with their tenants to keep the spaces occupied. It is best to lead the handling of commercial tenant evictions and rent payback to landlords and tenants. To extend payback generally for the entire market will devastate many property owners and may cause properties to be foreclosed and boarded up. I hope you will not approve the extension of the eviction moratorium and rent payback period for commercial tenants. The next public comment is from Sean McMorris and it reads as follows. Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, I am writing to express my support for city staff's recommendation, recommended amendments to the San Gabriel Urgency Ordinance 668. Staff's recommendation will further enhance the city's ordinance and better protect tenants during this time of crisis. The amendments are necessary, reasonable and welcome. As a San Gabriel tenant, I am grateful for the city's city hall continued attention to this important matter. In closing, I continue to support allowing the city to fall under the purview of the county's COVID-19 tenant protections. However, absent such a policy, I believe that adopting staff's proposed amendments is proper and just. The next public comment is from Alex Alvarez and it reads as follows. Congress passed a three trillion dollar package to pay all employees who have been laid off, terminated, et cetera, and to be paid an additional income of 600 per week on top of their unemployment payments. Most of the 36 million employees terminated are making more money now than they were while employed. A local business owner and a friend received 300,000 from the government to rehire their workers. His workers have refused to come back until August when their additional 600 unemployment check expires. The owner laughed and said, I have never had this much cash before in my life. Do you think this owner can pay this rent? His rent to his landlord? Of course he can. These people and businesses are not paying their rent to their landlords, not because they do not have the money, but because there is an eviction moratorium. Now our city council wants to extend this more eviction moratorium to a year? Why? Would this extension help anyone, especially the residential and commercial landlords like myself, who still have to pay 200,000 this year for property taxes? I am not receiving any income from my tenants. My tenants' businesses are open. In the state or in city or in the city going to forgive my taxes? Just a month ago in April, I paid almost $100,000 in property taxes. I simply asked the city council to understand what they did with the six-month eviction moratorium was a good thing at that time. I know for many local citizens, a one-year eviction moratorium will not help the citizens of the community, nor the businesses. Thank you all for your leadership and encourage, encourage in this time. The next public comment I will be reading reads is from Elizabeth Lu and it reads as follows. To whom it may concern. My name is Elizabeth Lu, a current San Gabriel city resident and a small business owner. My family has lived and worked in the city of San Gabriel for the past 35 years and we have been loyal and hardworking citizens to the city and the state of California. Our roots are deep within this community and we have employed and housed many local residents over the past several years. It is a place we call home. As we are in unprecedented times with the COVID-19 pandemic, many of us are unprepared for such financial burdens and further unknown effects that this virus may take hold in our lives. My family and I understand that COVID-19 is unprejudiced in how it will hurt us and follow our citizens. Our small businesses have been impacted drastically and I fear that we may need to close our doors after 35 years, like so many other companies facing similar decisions. I understand that we must all come together to help one another through these difficult times. Los Angeles County's Agenda C will allow for tenants who are unable to pay their rent, their monthly rent to be allowed six months to pay it back to avoid eviction. We agree with the measure and hope it will help the San Gabriel community along with our own tenants to get back on their feet and find some normalcy in their lives. However, we must be firm in our resolve that in an additional extension of six months to this measure totaling one year will cripple us and cause negative ripple effects for all of the individuals that live and work through us in our rental properties and businesses. If the Agenda C measure were to be extended to one year, consequences will be a burden my family alone cannot bear. As a landlord and a business owner, we will not be able to pay our property taxes, mortgage, utilities and maintenance. We will be forced to close our small business, which has been vital to our family and our employees' well-being for the last 35 years. A business that is the heart and soul of my father's generation passed down to generation. We have survived the previous recessions and so far the recent volatility of the economy, but we will not be able to survive this. If this measure extends to one year, we will be unable to help our tenants stay without eviction. Instead, we will be forced to evict as we are not able to pay the multitude of expenses that would amass and we will not be able to provide a home for them. We will not be able to provide jobs via small business, which will increase the mounting unemployment rate. We will, we feel the city and citizens, the bank lenders, property management, Los Angeles County tax collection and rental industry as a whole county will be negatively affected by extending this measure. That is the end of the three minutes for that comment. The next comment is from Matthew Buck and it reads as follows.
Dear Honorable Mayor and City Council, on behalf of the California Apartment Association, I am writing to request that you continue working closely with housing organizations in these difficult times and on the consideration to amend San Gabriel Valley's current emergency eviction moratorium. CAA understands that the coronavirus outbreak presents a health and financial crisis to all Californians. As an industry, we have an important role to play to work with our residents as we get through this. We urge city council to maintain a reasoned approach and to consider the deferral period for rent should remain at six months. As the crisis continues, there is time to consider extending or reviewing as we move forward. But 12 months at this time is difficult for owners who have major expenses that still require payments such as property tax, mortgage payments or unnecessary upgrades. A tenant should provide documentation that their loss of income is directly related to COVID-19 outbreak. The moratorium should only apply to non-payment of rent. All other lease violations should not be included. This, this is a reasonable request. Adopt the state's guidelines for moratorium on eviction. Governor Newsom realizes it's critical to protect renters and landlords equally and the San Gabriel Valley should follow suit. Renters facing financial turmoil because of the coronavirus outbreak should not have to worry about keeping a roof over their head. Housing providers need consideration and relief as well. The expenses and financial obligations have not been relieved for all parties. Let's find a consistent equitable approach that will help the entire community, including small businesses and housing providers get through this difficult time while maintaining their health, their homes and their financial security. Thank you for your consideration during these uncertain times. The next public comment that will be read is from Karen and it reads as follows. I am sending this email in regards to May 19, 2020, City Council Meeting Agenda C restricting evictions of residential and commercial tenants unable to pay rent due to COVID-19. In reality, landlords have financial obligations to make to keep up with their rental properties, either residential or commercial. In addition, some of them are relying on their rental income from tenants to pay for their daily living costs such as food, house payment, car payment and medical bills, et cetera. That being said, please do not extend the restriction to tenant eviction longer than six months in the city of San Gabriel. If the six-month period got extended to 12 months, many tenants will stop making efforts to pay rent even if they can. Landlords will lose their properties because they won't be able to pay their mortgage payments after three months grace period from lenders and financial institutions. Since retail businesses have been opened up as of today, many tenants should be able to return to work and start getting paid regularly from their employers. If they are still unemployed, they will get payments from EDD or apply for financial aid programs offered by the city, the state or federal level. However, many landlords do not qualify for these programs because they are already retired. Also, they are taking a hit on their pension income and 401K due to the recent market crashes. They are really struggling and their needs and needs their rent payments back on track ASAP. Thank you for your time and consideration in advance.
Okay, I have one more public comment and it is from Paul Padilla. The comment reads as follows. Dear council members, at the April 1 council meeting, when you considered your urgency ordinance related to evictions caused by COVID-19 pandemic along with other concerned community members, I called on you to take the kind of big, bold, strong action necessary to truly help people in this time of dire need. Instead, you passed a pretty small timid weak ordinance that simply did not meet the magnitude of the moment. At the May 5th council meeting, along with other concerned community members, I called on you to take to correct the shortcomings of your April 1 urgency ordinance by adopting the better, stronger, more protective county ordinance. Instead, you punted. Tonight, Councilmember Jason Pooh ran away. And so we are here tonight considering recommendations provided once again to you by our contracting deputy city attorney. Provisions you could have more easily adopted two weeks ago by adopting the county ordinance. If you continue to refuse to adopt the county's ordinance for San Gabriel, I call on you to take stronger, not weaker, action than the county. For instance, I have repeatedly called you, called on you to realize that neither the city's six months nor the county's 12-month rent repayment window is long enough. We are now in our second full month of the Saper at Home order. As I told you, May 5th, even if COVID-19 were to disappear tomorrow, it will take individual businesses and economy years to recover from even a two-month sinkhole. Let alone this massive growing hole that may be, that may well turn into the Second Great Depression. At least a Second Great Recession is now virtually granted, guaranteed. I have called on you to extend the repayment period to at least 24 months for now with the standard debt collection practices mandated, not eviction. At the end of the 24 months, I have also repeatedly called on you to impose a rental rate freeze so landlords do not raise rent to get around the various tenant protections. I also support the addition of storage units. Some people experiencing homelessness, including people I personally know and have met, end up being forced to use, at least occasionally, their storage unit as a loop over their head. And the last remaining substantial possessions of many people who are forced in the storage unit. And those possessions should not be auctioned off due to non-payment because of the COVID-19. Furthermore, I support adding a provision to the recommendations listed tonight to make it a criminal misdemeanor for landlords to violate provisions of this ordinance. The recommended provision prohibiting landlord harassment or intimidation of tenants is extremely important if you, like me, have read the press reports about the post-COVID-19 dramatic increase in the despicable practice of landlords propositioning tenants for sex acts in exchange for rent forgiveness. That is the end of the three-minute period and that is the last of the public comments I have tonight.
Thank you, Marilyn. And now I'm going to have Ms. Talberras facilitate the deliberation discussion.
Yeah, so there, there really are substantively like three key policy points that are before the council. The first has to do with the repayment period. The way the ordinance stands at the moment is we're granting a six-month payback period from the point where the ordinance expires, which as of now, the end of June. Just as a reminder, the ordinance expires 30 days after the governor's executive order, which is set to expire May 31st. And therefore our ordinance would expire at the end of June. Therefore, the repayment period would begin, the clock would start ticking at that point. The second key decision point for the council is this issue of verification. The way it's currently drafted, the, there are several requirements in terms of documentation that tenants are expected to provide in order to verify their inability to pay rent as it relates to COVID-19. The amendment is proposing, similar to the county's order, that tenants are allowed to self-certify. And at least the county and some other cities have created a form that tenants can complete where they would be able to state their, their need for non-payment of rent due to COVID. And then the third issue is this issue of extenuating, extenuating circumstances, adding that qualifying language to the notice provision. Our ordinance as it stands has a 14-day window to be able to notify the landlord. The county's is shorter than that. It's seven days, but it has this qualifying language attached to it. And then of course, there are other amendments, proposed amendments that are again intended to be more in line with the county. And, and then, of course, there are other amendments, proposed amendments that are, again, intended to be more in line with the counties for the council to consider. But going back to what was stated earlier, as the council knows, an action on urgency ordinance does require forfeits vote. So as a preliminary matter, Madam Mayor, what I would do is respectfully suggest that before getting into further specifics, it might be useful to briefly survey council members on those key policy points, as that might help inform how we proceed and facilitate discussion.
Okay, so then, let me just call on the remaining council members. We'll start with Vice Mayor Lau.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, you know, I got a phone call. This is an older Chinese man. He's been working as an engineer for 45 years. He retired, he saved some money, and he bought four units. And he lived in one of them. But for his past two months, he hasn't received the other three units' rental income. So he was asking for help. He filed for PPP. He filed SPA loan. None of them was due. And he was asking the mortgage banker to give him a break. Unfortunately, yeah, they will defer the loan payments for three months. But right after three months, he has paid additional 30% of mortgage payment. So he look at it, he cannot afford. Because, you know, in a year, he will be foreclosed and he has to sleep on the street because he that's his home. He will become homeless at age of 75. So this is a very serious situation. But I, I don't know how to help. Even, you know, we give him six months. Hopefully, he can borrow money to, you know, survive in six months. And hopefully, the tenants will pay rent after six months. But there's no guarantee of that. So I really, you know, my heart starts, but I cry with him. Unfortunately, I felt this is unfair. We want to help everybody, but the landlord, they cannot help themselves. So we have to make the decision tonight. But I agree, other things that maybe we can change, except the item seven, the payback period will stick to six months. So that's my opinion.
Okay, so, so you, you're okay with the notice to the landlord of inability to pay the verifiable documentation, the change that was made, except you would like to have the change, the payback period changed to six months, just on those three issues? Okay, great. Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't even know where to start. I have about two and a half pages of comments on this ordinance, so I would just say no to all of them. So that's my short answer. I can go into a long answer if we want to get into item by item.
Let's just focus on those three for now, so.
I'm a no on all three of those.
Okay. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ding.
Yeah, we, we hear that the tenant and, and the small business owner, the both sides, the, the public comments. Okay, so if today we need like, need like a make a decision, want to still want to keep our 180 days or 12 months? So, my, I have the some proposal, okay, so I may, it's, that's I'm learning from our, our, like, I think it's Glendale. They have, they've, they also just passed the, followed the county the 12 months. But they still have their own ordinance to say the, they were like, unpaid the rent after repayment for the 25% for each quarter. Like, that's meaning like every three months, the tenant should pay to 25% total rent they owned to the, to the, the, the property owner. I think this, this probably is more reasonable to, to like, consider the, for the, for the tenant, also consider like, our Vice Mayor Liu talking about the, the, the business owner, in order to be business owner. Yeah, hopefully, this one make the option, we can add on that. So, yeah, so we consider both sides to help because both sides, it's, it's, it's a god of hurt by the, the COVID-19. Yeah, and I also encourage you like, I like it that we have like included the tenant and the owner. Try like, encourage their, establish a payment plan, maybe like, just say like, if the, the tenant and owner have a long-term relationship, probably they can understand each other to help each other. It's a ghostwood, it's, it's, it's a tough time. So, yeah, so for, for the, our city ordinance, I, my consideration for the both sides, so I suggest like, like, learning from the city of Glendale, they have the 25% pro rate of repayment. It's, it's helpful, both. That's, that's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so I, it appears that we just don't, we can't reach consensus. It has to be unanimous.
Correct.
And so, there's no really, at this point, we're kind of back to where we were on, on the previous meeting. We, if we can't reach a unanimous decision, then we fall back to our original ordinance, which is, well, urgency ordinance 668. So.
Sorry, by the way, so if the Jason Po is recused, so I'm also the same situation. Should I discuss that too? Oh, yes, that's I wanted.
I saw that you looked like you wanted to say something before we started the whole exercise.
Yeah.
So, and I was, I was tempted to jump in on your behalf. Understand that Councilmember Po recused himself, not because he thought he was legally required to, but that because he, as he explained it, he felt that he couldn't be impartial in making the decision, which is a a reasonable thing to do, but isn't required by the law. Councilmember Ding, I think at this point, it, you could certainly do that, in which case the conversation would end completely. I think it's effectively over, however, anyway, because it's pretty clear that there are not four members of you that are interested in making any changes, or I shouldn't say, I should say it a different way. All four members of you are not interested in making changes, which means that this is sort of a, a dead issue at this point until, you know, until that, until you guys want to bring it up again. So, based on what I've heard tonight, the, the legal effect is that the existing ordinance would continue. And it doesn't sound like there's a basis to make a motion.
No, not, not at this point. So we, we need to, to move on to, to the next item. It, it was very clear from, from Norma's presentation. There's really three key issues, and if we can't get a unanimous agreement to it, then the motion dies, or, or the, the ordinance, we can't move forward with it.
Can I just say one other thing? I, I listened to Councilmember Ding's suggestion, and while they were interesting, Councilmember Ding, the other problem we have is that those provisions you're talking about are not, were not drafted and are not exactly before us tonight. So even if a majority of the city council were interested in going that route, and I mean, I shouldn't say a majority, even if four members of the city council were interested in going that route, which it doesn't sound like they are, we would still have to bring something back on a subsequent meeting to do that.
And Keith, can I step in there?
Sure.
Because several of my comments that I prepared for this were regarding the fact that at the last meeting, I said I had a lot of problems with the county's ordinance. And it seems like we're just incorporating the county's ordinance into the city councils or the city of San Gabriel's ordinance. And that's kind of where a lot of my comments revolve around, is that I, I think my idea was that we were at least going to discuss some of these with council offline and give comments to, you know, prior to, you know, getting this sent to the entire council. Because some of the county's ordinances make zero sense. And by zero, I mean, they actually are, they're not renter protection, they're actually landlord punishment. It's, that's the way it seems like they wrote this, like someone in there and said, what's the worst thing we can do to landlords? It's not necessarily even helping tenants. A lot of their provisions hurt tenants. That's why I was, if this comes up again, I'd rather have some input into it because even if it was a four-to-one tonight, I could have said no, and it would have been done. We don't even need consensus. It needs one negative vote.
You're correct about that. And I apologize if you offered me those suggestions and I missed it. I, I was.
Last time at the meeting, I didn't even know this was coming back to this meeting until I saw the agenda.
Oh, okay, then I guess, when I didn't get, I, I was expecting to receive comments from, from council members. We didn't. And since we hadn't received any, we just ran with what we had and just put that up, which was the county's ordinance.
Yeah, I think for future, if we just get a draft, like wherever, whenever you get, come up with a draft before it makes the agenda, I'd love to be able to comment because I just had some, and, and I just have some base questions. And I don't know if this is going to come up, if anybody intends to get this back on the agenda or not. If we're not going to get it back on the agenda, then I'm not worried about it. But even our, I even went back and read our, our ordinance as written. I think we have some things that are problematic to me.
I, it sounds like from the comments I'm hearing tonight, and I don't think that this has any reason to come back again.
Okay.
I, I mean, you, it's, it's up to you guys to tell me otherwise, but, but from what I'm hearing, there's not a lot of enthusiasm for adopting these county provisions and, and particularly the, the one-year provision.
As far as. One general question, because I'm confused as to the emergency order itself. When is it over?
Ours is over, Norma correctly, if I'm wrong, but I believe ours is over 30 days after the emergency is, is lift. The executive, the governor's executive order is lifted, which currently is at the end of May, although most people think it'll be extended after.
I mean, he said the, he's not going to remove it until there's a quote-unquote vaccine, which could be 2021. So we could, this week, that perpetuates our ordinance until at the whim of the governor. I don't know that the California Emergency Declaration Act has an expiration date. I think he can continually update it. I think it's like, there's a statutory period. So my whole thing is we could get stuck in the limbo. We're saying 12 months after this, and it, it's done in 2021. And here's landlords just done. They're, they're literally over.
Well, if, if we, we could also end it as, I guess we could end it by majority as long as you were, we were willing to let the termination take effect 30 days after a second read.
I was thinking like after phase three, for example, the governor has a phase plan. Phase three is when quote-unquote, non-essential businesses start to open, like, you know, gyms and hair salons and a lot of the, so I mean, I, because my whole thing is this, I have a feeling this emergency order is lasting until 2021 at least for economic reasons, not necessarily for health reasons. And there's nothing stopping the governor from doing that, that I, I, I did a lot of research. And I mean, when I, when I went through the Emergency Services Act, which, believe me, is a very long act and quite convoluted, there is no end to this. The governor can keep doing it. And now, now I've seen the legislature is coming up and saying, hey, wait a minute, we want to pull some of this power back from the governor. There's some legislators trying to revise the act, which, because they think this is going to become just an unlimited extension. And that was my, a, a kind of a follow-up question to that is Wisconsin had a lawsuit, it got overturned, the declaration of emergency, as well as Oregon today. What happens if we have this ordinance and then it gets pulled out from unders, and there is no executive order, it's nullified? Then how else can all the rents do? Is, I mean, how, how do we, we're basing it on a, on a, a foundation that may not be there, because if someone sues and wins, which there's 175 lawsuits against it right now in California. If one of them prevails, does this go away? Because we're basing it on a, on an emergency declaration that could be nullified.
Well, we're, our, our, our power to do it is not based on that declaration. The declaration just sets the timing, which is different. So I suppose if, 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 if the declaration were somehow ended by the court, then I would say that the executive order, I'm sorry, the executive order was ended by the court, then it would be under, ended on that day, and I would start counting that day as the, for the termination of our ordinance. But I don't think that means our ordinance was improper when, when adopted.
Talking about nullification, so that is as if it never existed, so there never actually was a start date, because it was improper action. So therefore, our ordinance would be done. It never had a start date. How could it have an end date?
I, I.
I researched a lot, so.
I, 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 I understand your point, but, but again, I think we're talking about, we, we sort of pegged the timing of ours to, to the duration of the executive order. The court would look to our legislative intent in doing that to determine what the effect of nullifying the legislative order was. And I think a reasonable intent is that it was for duration only and did not, was not meant to be the, the somehow, the limits of our authority. But to your main point, yes, it's possible it could continue for a while. We do have a process for getting things on the agenda. So if, if any city council member feels that this is continuing too long, we can always come back and have a discussion about it. And like I said, if, it, it doesn't have to be an urgency matter to end it.
Well, I think the reason I said this because all of our findings were based on the declaration of emergency under an executive order. I mean, that was all our wherethes, you know, all nine of them or 10 of them.
Okay, but as you know, the wherethes aren't, th- those are for establishing context and not, and not substantive portions of the, of the ordinance.
I, I understand, but I, I think what I, my base question is, let's say there's no state of emergency, there's no executive order, could a city council come in there and say, no one has to pay rent for six months? For any reason? I mean, do we have to have a basis? Or is, is that within our jurisdiction?
Well, I believe it is, as long as we're acting pursuant to an emergency. Now, when there's a declared emergency, that's sort of a, I guess, a prima facie emergency. There, but there doesn't have to be an emergency declared by the governor for there to be a local emergency that we're responding to. You know, just like my clients that were in the Wolseley Fire Area declared an emergency before the state or anyone else did.
That's often the trigger for a state emergency. I understand that we have local emergency powers, but it's a lot of it, I don't know that we would have one that would just affect San Gabriel to do a rent issue like this. Because that's kind of my point. I'm not talking emergencies in general. I'm talking about an emergency where we say tenants are not obligated to pay rent, and that's what we're doing here. They have to pay it, but I'm saying that we can defer it. I mean, obviously, there's some issues there, but I mean, that's why I, I just think the way the county went about it and the way we were trying to follow the county is just, it's untenable. And that's why for me, there'd be, I'd like to change our existing ordinance, honestly, after reading it. I gave it a good read the first time, but then it, it kind of sinks in with the mechanics of what we're doing. And even six months can break a lot of these landlords. I mean, and then at the end of six months, effectively, let's say there's nine months of rent after this. Let's say it's done in August. And then that's when we start, start the repayment date. You have tenants that say they're unable to pay their rent for these six months, and now they're paying 150% rent for the next six months. So I don't think that's realistic. You're going to have a lot of these people unable to pay rent at all, or even very diminished, not even 100% of their rent, much less 150%. So we're adding to the problem. We're not helping anyone. Delaying a payment like this is not necessarily helping somebody. And then there are a lot of people that rent that, hey, I'll just move and never pay it.
Well, bear in mind that currently, the effect of repealing our existing ordinance would be that the county's ordinance would then be controlling over the same renter, so.
Which is why I'm not for repealing it.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, so when you're considering with the duration of ours, you also have to think about the duration of the counties, because if, if we end ours before the counties, then, then I think you have a, a situation which, you know, may run count. you know, may run counter to your, your points.
Oh, I, I believe me, I don't think we should be ceding power to the county either, so, because they are not, and yes, they are jurisdiction, but we're not an unincorporated area. No, I get it, I, I'm done, it's okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just move forward to the, to the next item, and if, um, Mark, can you reach, uh, Councilmember Poo to let him know? We've just completed our discussion. Uh, we have public comment, city clerk. Can you please read any public comment we may have?
Good afternoon, Mayor, we haven't received any at all, sorry, it's evening. We have not received any at all.
Okay, thank you. Next item, uh, city manager's report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have, uh, two quick items and then a question for the council. The two items, um, first of all, just to reiterate something I mentioned, uh, last week, that we're very happy to bring on our new economic development manager, Domenica Megardichian will start with us on June the eighth. She comes to us from Torrance, and we'll do a full introduction to council when she's officially on board, but we're excited about having that help, especially in light of tonight's um, start of our discussion on the Economic Development three-point-oh plan. Uh, second thing for the council is, uh, you will be receiving in your Friday mail delivery, uh, the draft budget with all of the detailed line items that you're used to seeing. We're giving it to you just a couple of days in advance of our meetings that start up next week. Please don't feel like you have to read the whole thing and, and know it by next week. Ken and I and Julia will start working through that with you and answer any preliminary questions that you have, and then we'll be ready to discuss that in full in June.
Uh, Mark, I'm sorry, I, I just want to clarify, uh, at least for the public. So staff is meeting one-on-one with, with each council member, so we can, um, ask our questions, we can give feedback, and then you are able to come back with a budget that, for us to approve.
That's correct, and we will also post that online, so the public will have a chance to see that well in advance of, of June, so that they have a chance to review it. And they can, uh, email and, and bring any questions to us as well.
Great, thank you.
And then finally, just a question for the council, just a thumbs up or a nod or a, a, uh, no. Um, but when, um, Mayor Minchaca brought up the question of closing streets for outdoor dining, I've been thinking about that, and places like Pasadena have a little bit different situation than we do, when they can close down, let's say, Colorado Boulevard, because there are several other streets that can be used instead. And we don't have that ability on, um, Valley or Las Tunas, uh, or, or St. Gabriel as an example. Um, I can think of a couple of restaurants we could help individually, that could use their parking lots, um, and then have street parking. But my question for the council is, and there may be more, um, downsides than outweigh the benefits, but before we spend any staff time looking into it, would the council be interested in looking into using parking lots for outdoor dining? The, besides all of the other things I could think of, one of the major negative side effects would be the neighborhoods would be affected by extra overflow parking from those, um, uh, businesses that would have extra, um, outdoor dining space and less parking. So is that something that the council wants us to look into, if we could even make a program like that happen? Uh, understanding that there may be some negative side effects from those folks who live in the area, um, but, but trying to help those businesses and help the community have, um, places to eat when we are, uh, in a different situation. So just need a couple of heads up, or, or, or saying no, so that we don't waste staff time on it.
Okay, well, I'd see, you can't see everyone, first of all. Vice Mayor Lau, uh, yes, no?
Uh, no, yeah, because, uh, first of all, you know, our, uh, restaurants, they're, uh, different types, you know, and they're, I should say no, because we don't have, uh, you know, big parking lot period, and we have parking.
Vice Mayor Lau, I have to cut you off, I, I, we shouldn't have any discussion on it, I'm sorry for opening that up, so just to know if you want us to.
Oh, yeah, no.
Okay, um.
Stop me unmute.
Oh, okay, Councilmember Dean, yes, no?
Depends the, 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 the business area, right? So if they, it really have the enough space, maybe we can consider.
Okay, thank you. Yes, no, uh, Councilmember Harrington?
Uh, Mark, I just wanted a little clarification, exactly, um, what did you mean by a street? Do you mean, um, like, I mean, a parking lot, so you mean for a week, for a month, for, how, how long are we talking? I didn't quite understand that.
We would come back with all those parameters, I just, if that's something that would, would be something that would interest you, then we would bring back that information on, on whether it's, uh, it would be more than a week, it would have, have to be a long time for it to make sense. It would be during this re, phase two, where we're in this modified, um, reduced tenancy allowed in restaurants and six feet apart for tables and all of that stuff. So it would be probably, uh, weeks, if not months, not days.
I mean, without discussion, I would let the restaurants decide.
Okay, Councilmember Poo?
Um, I say yes, I think it could be interesting, um, but, uh, obviously, you know, we're taking a straw poll here, and I might be in the minority.
Well, um, I say yes, uh, I, I think we need to put everything on the table, and, um, if there's possibility, especially if it's short-term, and it's going to help our businesses kind of, uh, you know, ramp up quickly, uh, I think space is a big issue. And if there's some places that you think could work, and of course, we, we wouldn't force any business to do it. Um, but I think I, I think it would be helpful for them to see that it's a possibility, it's an option.
Thank you, that is all I had for tonight.
Okay, uh, council comments, uh, Vice Mayor Lau?
Oh, okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, uh, on the bright side, today we receive another ten thousand, uh, facial mask uh, from this HBV, uh, foundation, and they're very creative, they're a skincare, uh, you know, business, but they put on, it's a, a weight loss, uh, competition. So they delivered ten thousand, um, masks today at, to the city hall. So I think, uh, they have, uh, creative ideas how to improve their business. Another, uh, a good story is about the Hilton Hotel. Uh, I have not confirmed with the owner yet, but this is what I heard. Uh, they offer, uh, one month of, uh, rent at the hotel for fifteen hundred dollars, and plus a one thousand dollars a month for all the restaurants inside, uh, the, uh, Hilton Plaza. So I don't know, dozens of, uh, restaurants, uh, and anyone can, you know, go to any of these restaurants for, uh, three meals a day, and that's included for one month for a thousand dollars. So I think, wow, this is a very creative idea, and maybe attract some people that will be interested in, uh, you know, live in the hotel and get free food. Uh, not free food, but food included, uh, for a month. So I think that's kind of exciting.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Dean?
Yeah, okay, the, uh, it's, it's a long meeting, okay, so, uh, uh, yeah, I still like, uh, let our pu, this business, especially for a restaurant, know that the, the, the website, they, if, do the, their free website called youdinner.com, they'll help you to like, uh, uh, the, the people, the online order to, to management your business too, okay? And, uh, uh, also, I think this weekend, it's, uh, usually we have the Memorial long weekend, but, but, uh, because COVID nineteen, but hopefully, the, this is phase two, the reopen, so if possible, yeah, it's a happy Memorial Days, and, uh, if I get, uh, like, um, Memorial we, weekend, uh, the, whatever dinner or lunch, it's ordered from our local city, the restaurant. Okay, that's my, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Harrington?
Uh, nothing, I'd just like to thank staff, we had some really good reports tonight, um, and I echo Tony's comments, so yeah, let's, let's try and shop locally as much as possible and order locally when you can, it really does help our economy, so that's the fastest way we're going to help recover, is if we help each other and shop locally. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Poo?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I'd just like to thank staff for all their hard work and, you know, I continue move things forward. It's definitely a difficult, challenging time, and there's lots of uncertainty. Um, but, uh, you know, I feel like we've really risen to the challenge, and that, uh, you know, slowly but surely, we are, uh, as collectively, as, as a county, as a country, you know, where we are moving through this. And, um, there, you know, there will be another side, and, uh, uh, just for any members of the public who are still tuned in, the, um, Harold Christian Health Center, uh, testing site for healthcare workers, social workers, grocery and restaurant and, and food service workers, uh, is, um, by appointment only, and, and you need to call six-two-six two-eight-six-eight-seven-zero-zero to make an appointment, and, um, hopefully, we'll be able to help, uh, supplement them and, uh, expand upon the, the scope of their testing at some point in their future. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And, uh, I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments already, um, definitely shop local if you can. Uh, call in advance, because the hours have changed for many of our businesses. But we're fortunate enough, our economic development team, they have this handy-dandy list that you can go to, it's a great resource. Uh, it's a matrix of all the local businesses that are still open, taking takeout, and it has hours and just a, just a whole host of information, so it's been very, very valuable. And if you, if you don't see your favorite restaurant on there, uh, we, we do try to get permission, we don't want to just put businesses on there, because for a variety of reasons, they may not want to be placed in the list. So we do ask permission before they are included on the list. Um, I had the opportunity to, um, represent the city at the Asian Youth Center for a special presentation. Supervisor Hilda Solis donated ten thousand dollars to the food pantry at the Asian Youth Center. Uh, they provide, um, meals to three hundred families, uh, thirty meals at a time. Uh, it's not just for St. Gabriel primarily, but it's also for the surrounding cities. And so if, um, if you have the opportunity and the financial means, uh, you know, they can still use assistance. You can, uh, they have a, a list on their website of foods that they're, um, asking for. But one of the things that really, um, struck me is that, uh, there is, there was a lot of perishable food items that have been donated or, or somehow secured. There was broccoli, there was mozzarella cheese, um, lots of milk. Um, and so they get these boxes, and, uh, people stand, you know, six feet apart, but they have a good system in place, egress, ingress, or ingress, ingress, um, but, um, but they need assistance, it's just, um, it just, again, the, the needs are great. Uh, the other location too, I'm, I'm on the board of directors for the La Casa. And we too are giving out meals every Friday, we have bags that we give to our families, and, um, you can go to our website. On, our, I mean, La Casa's website, and we have, um, a very specific list, because we, we are providing meals for a lot of the children. And so, um, we need like the little snacks and things that are very specific for, for young children, preschooler in particular. And, um, you know, please, um, everyone, um, be safe and, um, stay healthy, and and I really believe that, um, you know, we will get through this, and, and, uh, again, applause to the, um, to the staff, because they, they are meeting the challenge, um, and, um, you know, I, I, I'm just so proud to be part of the team, to be part of this group, so, so thank you so much for that, and, uh, as Councilmember, um, Dean said, you know, it is Memorial Weekend next week, so, you know, don't do anything too, too outlandish. We still have the orders, you know, take care of yourselves. And, uh, so the next item, clerk, that concludes my, my comment. I think it's closed session. And we have none. So, um, let's see, the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, June second, twenty-twenty, at six-thirty PM, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, folks.
Night, everyone.